It's just the optics.
Eric Galli.
Project 459212, annual Lewis and Clark Park improvements, page 216. Project 45921-
Just bring it back for wrap up so we can at least-
Would you like to bring that back to wrap up?
Oh, yeah.
Are they ordered yet? The seats are shipping, the original sets of seats are shipping March 9th, so it's, we're perfect-
Oh, they are finally?
Yeah.
What's caulking under the seat mean?
Like some tuck pointing underneath there. Painting seats will be when? If this is approved, I will, the, we did, we did plans and specifications because it was over the threshold, so I can bring that back anytime after the budget is approved. If approved.
Want that back at wrap up?
Well, yeah, I know, so I want to bring it back.
I hope.
Project 459-
Before we move on, just back to the Anderson, and we talked about that paint, just for consideration, it's not life or death, but what about maybe thinking about that blue that the John Henry sculpture uses, and it would be kind of a tie in to downtown, leading to, so just a thought.
Got it.
That, the, painting the Anderson uprights, I suggested maybe thinking about the, that John- Yep, and it ties in with the river, and we already have that, people love that color downtown.
Dan, pullover blue?
Yeah, it's kind of that color, mm-hmm, right, and, and the public really liked it when they, you know, they voted that, and they're like, oh, finally, a really good color, so, just a thought.
Got it in my notes.
Okay. Project 459214, aquatic comprehensive plan.
I, I still want to, not today, but I want you to tell me more about caulking under those seats isn't going to make any difference, you're going to have to find an epoxy that you can put in those holes, and thank you, Darryl, for shaking your head, and that's not 175,000 bucks worth, I can tell you.
I've been working with Stan on this, so we'll grab our information, and I will get you with something on that.
Project 459214, aquatic comprehensive plan, page 218.
We have a guest that would like to speak on this project.
Good morning, my name's Justine Weir, I live at 3601 Hamilton Boulevard, I have been trying to advocate for the Headington Park splash pad for going on to two years this May, I believe, I originally brought it up, I believe I emailed the entire city council that summer, and then I also emailed Matt, and I presented my idea at the Park and Rec meeting that summer, there's been a lot of support from, like, on Facebook and stuff, from other parents of kids in the north side area for Headington Park to be better utilized, and quite a few of us, those of us that have small children, thought a splash pad would be a great idea, I had sent a map to Matt where I presented it at the Parks and Recs meeting of where all of the splash pads and the pools are located, and the north side area is really lacking on any type of, of thing, really, we don't really have any pools, we don't really have any splash pads, you do have to drive, and it would be nice to have one more in like a walking distance, especially for families that have kids that might be home in the summer alone, like middle schoolers, or, you know, families that just want to be able to walk to the park rather than having to load up and drive across town.
Have transportation or something, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, not all families have reliable transportation.
Yeah.
It's also, it's quite a bit of space at Headington Park is not being utilized, and Matt did inform me, I wasn't able to come last year when it was approved in the budget, I was unfortunately sick, but I was originally approved last year to be installed this year, quite a few people have, like, reached back out to me asking if I had any updates, and I was really excited to tell them, like, it was going to be put in this coming summer, and I was unfortunately informed that you guys are trying to get it pushed till next summer, as someone who's been very passionate about this project, and probably pretty vocal, I worry that if it does get pushed back another year, that it's going to get pushed back another year, and that, I understand it is a hefty financial cost, but I personally am willing to put quite a bit of effort into fundraising in order to make sure that it still happens this summer, I've already put feelers out on Facebook, and I know a few people who own businesses that would be willing to help sponsor to still make this happen this summer, so I would love if you guys would help us still make it happen.
Oh, just another quick update, so, yeah, it was originally budgeted for FY24, the design was approved last year, it has been designed, so, it's just whenever the funding is available, likely, if it, even if it does get, whatever the year that it gets approved, it'll take a construction season to get it done, so it probably won't open in the same year that it's, that it's approved for funding.
Construction could start in-
April or May. Whenever, whenever the year is that it starts, it's probably going to take the entire summer, yes, so-
Was there any capital campaigns started for the other splash pads?
No, they've all been funded by the city, mostly because of the swimming pool scenario.
I don't feel like we should require these residents to do that either, put the burden on them. I don't feel like we should require that the residents, you know, fundraise and begin a capital campaign when the other splash pads were sponsored by the city.
Why, why did you say it was pushed back a year?
That's just the way it fell through as, as we went through the process with all the requests that were out there, this, you know, a lot of the Parks and Rec projects, if they weren't their maintenance items, they're tied to a grant, they're tied to private fundraising, so a lot of the new stuff, you know, it's not, we're not seeing that happen unless it's tied to private fundraising or grants, that's just-
Yeah, some of the grants, the additional grants required us to move projects forward to-
Yes, Destination Iowa was a great example of that.
So, I think during peer review, Matt tried to, we tried our best to balance out to make sure we didn't lose grant dollars too, so that's-
So, this was just a balancing thing.
Okay. I'd still like to bring it back at the end when we see where we're at.
I would too.
You can bring that back.
Understood.
So, the wrap up will be on February 15th, and they'll bring it back for further discussion on that day.
Okay, thank you so much.
Did you understand the delay that, that that was what the delay was for, or the, putting it back into the 20, FY25 year?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Did you understand the explanation on that?
No, I don't fully understand it.
So, when projects come forward, like our capital improvement program, what happens is all of the city departments come together, and they, they give each project a score, rate it on what the economic impact could be, how much usage it'll have, and what available funding we have, and then the city staff, along with the city manager, sit down and decide, and finance decide what projects should move forward into that, and which projects could be shelved for a year depending on what their score is, and that's why the recommendation came forward for us in this year for, for the capital improvement program.
But, to take that a step further, is, a lot of times Parks and Rec depend on grants, and we have to have matching funds to go with the bran, grants, and there's a timeframe, so, rather than lose a million dollars, or $800,000, or 80% maybe of another project, we have to take those match, those dollars that the city has available and match it, or we lose a much greater amount, so, I think that's more the case here, is that we have projects that we're getting grants for, and we've got to take that money and put it towards that grant to keep them moving, so, but I think you have some traction here with council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Project 459302, city trails, page 220. Project 459317, Big Sioux Crossing, page 222.
These next several trail projects are all tied to Destination Iowa funding, so they've been programmed to be able to meet the deadlines associated-
Not, not the Big Sioux Crossing, that's it?
Yeah, it has, it has some Destination Iowa funds, very little, but it's got some, just for the Iowa side.
Well, it's not saying that.
Uh, first line at the top on the, it says Destination Iowa, yeah, very small.
And how much is South Dakota paying?
Uh, we have a funding agreement we're working with them on right now.
Because we're bonding the whole thing, that's my question.
We cannot spend any money on their side of the, of the deal, so this, this would just be Sioux City's portion of the project.
Plus the bridge.
Plus the bridge.
And so they're only-
They would pay for half the bridge, Sioux City would pay for half the bridge.
So, they're going to spend a million, three, two?
They will, well, there, there's fundraising dollars that are going to get allocated to, to help with their funding.
I don't care about that, are they spending an equal amount, that's what I want to know.
The total cost will be an equal, will be an equal amount.
So, it's going to be a-
It's going, there's going to be separate divisions of bidding, there's going to be a, a Dakota Dunes, yeah, so, basically 50% of the bridge and their portion of the trail.
Okay, and that, the one point, the whole project is, must be in 2.6 million dollar range.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Yep.
And, and what bothers me is, we've been, I know I'm going to lose this one too, but that's okay, we've been promising the people from the north side that we would hook up the Floyd River Trail for at least 10 years around, and this project comes in, and we can't get to South Dakota fast enough before we hook up our town.
That was the beauty of the Destination Iowa grant, is we could focus on all of them.
Well, it's just, the point is, we keep saying we're going to do that phase of the trail, but we never, we always push it back, it never gets, it's always a year out, a year out, a year out, and it's time we build that phase, it doesn't, makes no sense to go to 4th Street and end, what good does that do?
That's the next project of, on the next sheet.
I, I know that, but I'm saying, this project came up last year, and all of a sudden, boy, it's, it's in, and now we got, it's the next one, but it's a year out, a year further out.
Yeah, but, I mean, we had to wait till the Riverfront Trail project was complete, and then we are working with, so, the timing of this project's basically tied to where we're at with the Army Corps of Engineers and the, the Gordon Drive biaduct, so, a couple of things have to play out there before we can finalize the route, so we're still in the preliminary stage of that, because we haven't got Army Corps approval yet.
On the Floyd Trail, can I-
Floyd Trail, yes.
Big Sioux Crossing, discussion of that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that preceded me, that's been rekindled.
It was years ago, and they told us they didn't want us there because they were afraid we'd steal their TBs, and I don't care who reports that because it's the truth.
That was, that was brought up in the recent meeting as well.
Yeah, exactly.
The Public Input Meeting that we had last fall, it was 95% of the people there were very supportive.
I get that, oh, yeah, that's changed, and I'm 95% in, in favor of hooking up this trail that was the first trail we built in town, basically, that we've never figured out in 25 years how to hook it up.
Working on it.
Let's look.
Yeah, right.
Well, I know, but you know, we got all the way to Moring Side, we've done all that stuff, but once again, we, okay.
Do you want to announce that one?
No, I don't.
Project 459321.
You're funding it with the baited TIP money, it's not like one year of, when you're taking TIP money, it's not like one year makes a big difference there, it's not general obligation necessarily, and I don't know where the biaduct comes into play, because don't you go down on, run along the riverbank?
If we can.
Well, if we don't know how we can go by now, who, who the heck have we hired to, I mean, what's McClure doing that we don't know that by now? Where we're going.
I mean, we've had, we've been having conversations for, like, about a year on this, and we're to the point where we might have to start looking at Plan B.
Does the Army Corps engineer decide if we can run along there?
Yes.
We're not crossing it, are we?
If we can, if we can occupy that berm, if we-
Not a matter of crossing, you can't go down on their bank without their permission.
We got to determine if we can occupy the berm down in the bank, if we can, we will, that's the primary route, if we can't, we'll go around, and we got a secondary route that's been identified.
You think that'll be decided, Matt, in the next several months?
Yes.
It's in their hands, the Army Corps?
Yes, I would say within the next month, we're going to have to decide if we're moving forward, if we're able to move forward, or if we have to go the second, secondary route.
Do we know what that route is?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can provide that.
Okay.
And you, you, you sure McClure has it before the Corps, because that's a very long process.
Yes, that's what we've been waiting on.
Can I bring that back for wrap up?
No, I don't care.
I'll just send out the route.
Project 459322, currently titled Sergeant Bluff Trail, we will change that to Lois Hill's Scenic Trail, on page 226.
And this, I'm going to ask this question, is Sergeant Bluff paying for everything once we get to the limits, city limits?
100%, yes.
So, this is our portion only?
Correct.
Project 459326, Flywood Trail, Phase 3, page 228.
This is outside the city limits, so this is 100% privately funded.
Project 569001, cemeteries, improvements, and rehab.
What's a cemetery development, what are you talking about? It's just 5,000, I'm just curious what that, what that means.
That would be where we've been using Logan Cemetery for borrow right now, we'll have to do some layout, you know, eventually planning for those acreages to be developed into usable, saleable.
How full is Logan?
I don't have the percentages off the top of my head.
About Graceland, you get a South Pole, Graceland, and Logan are?
We'll ask them for a memo.
Yeah. You don't have much, you don't have any more ground, Graceland?
No, we don't.
Should ask the people that have no use for the old golf course, how they'd like to make a nice donation to the city.
Years ago, we looked at it, but we'll relook at it.
Too hilly?
No, no, I'm, I do believe I put in for acquisition at that area, and there was a higher use at that time.
Yeah, now, now the way they built that subdivision, you can't get back there anyway.
Okay.
Project 663238, Reinvestment District, Sooland Expo, page 231. Project 719011, Annual Median Enhancements, page 234.
Got a solution for that, take the dang things out, and then you don't have to maintain them, how soon can we get that done?
Public Works would go with that.
No, they wouldn't.
Yes, they would.
They hate medians.
They hate the medians.
Why don't we start taking them out?
They'd rather have it just painted, like the one on Hamilton there by-
They've changed, because the ghost of Bill Amundson still lives in that fourth floor, I can tell you that, they've changed, because there's no way, I mean, if you're going to do it, then Hamilton Boulevard is a classic example, if you're going to take medians out, then you should take them out before you go spend $2 million redoing the street.
Well, and we're talking about taking out the median by, on Hamilton and by Myers, because it's, it needs, you know, some fixing, and that did come up in one of our meetings, that they would consider that when they're doing that Hamilton reconstruction.
What are you talking about here, just anywhere?
Gordon Drive.
Gordon I-29.
Yeah, a lot of these, Gordon Drive needs a little bit of work, and we're looking at, remember, we just talked about entrance signs, Sioux City branding, lighting, Gordon Drive, Floyd and I-29 entrance, expending some of those funds for certain things, once the DOT is out of those areas, you know, Third and Wesley, we have a large median, you know, we can do things there for Sioux City branding, welcome to, whatever we decide instead of our large southern sign, so, these funds could be in-
Yeah, well, you're not going to get the state to take out medians, you may get, you may finally have somebody in this building that'll go for it, but you're not going to get it, you're not going to get the state to take those things.
No, not take them out, but actually put-
No, I'm saying, you'll have to make them nice, because the state will never agree to take them.
Correct, and-
The ghosts of whoever trained Bill Amundson still live in the DOT building in Ames.
Isn't that what came up on, several years ago on Gordon Drive, medians, had an issue?
Yeah, that's how Dave Vares got elected.
Well, was it plantings, and it went to solid surface, or was it solid surface and went to plant?
Not rock, but the, the nice paver type.
Yes, I do remember that, well, and there's been some talk about the trees and the type of plantings that are on some of them can be blocking.
They've done a great job on the Hamilton, but the problem is that, they don't, they're just nothing but something for the snowplows to hit.
Right, Wesley Parkway is beautiful too, with all those day lilies.
I'm not blaming the snowplows, I'm just saying that-
The design.
Yeah.
The next department is Administrative Services, Mike Collette. First project is 889001, Annual City Building Repair, page 64.
Good morning.
One more, Matt.
Mike, you having a good morning?
Yeah, so far, so good, we'll see.
For troubleshooting the audio.
As soon as I ask the question, I wish-
Yeah, we're dealing with a little snow this morning in all areas, so.
Yes.
Um, so, for the annual city buildings repair, we try and equalize this on a annual basis for funding, and there was some discussion last year at CIP on lighting for City Hall, we pushed that out a year, and so just want council direction on if that is important for you to leave in this year's budget, or to concentrate on interior City Hall.
Interior here in City Hall?
Yeah.
What do you got left to do?
Uh, wallpapering and painting, basically, the wallpaper is really in tough shape on some floors, so, we're going to systematically go through each floor and start that process.
Why don't we paint instead of wallpaper?
We will, I think on some floors, it just depends, like-
Part of it have to do with the historic?
I don't think so, no, it's just presentation, whatever, whatever the desire is.
Wallpaper, I would bet.
That's wallpaper.
That's wallpaper.
Is wallpaper?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan suggests we painted that John Henry blue.
Nice.
Good.
My, my question would be if we, if we, on the lighting for City Hall, if we, if that wasn't a priority, where could we put that 200,000?
That would go into City Hall, in the interior.
We don't have anything in there for-
We don't, we're just trying to equalize-
That'd be 200,000 to do that?
Yeah, we're trying to equalize 200 to 250 a year, depending on what the first round of bids, that'll tell us kind of how much that'll-
Because you didn't do 250 last year.
In the current years, one will, will start right now, in '23.
Oh, wait a minute, slow down here, because that's not possible, I'm not real smart, but you got 313, so if you're still going to spend that 250, you don't have a 313 carryover balance for this year then.
We do not, so I talked to Sarah yesterday, there's a fund, there's a project out there that needs to, 100,000 needs to transfer in here yet, that's still not part of this carryover.
Those dark holes that she found, that-
Well, it just, it didn't get combined, these were some projects that get combined into one this year, and that one didn't get combined, so.
Mike, with this cover then, the rest of the lighting we need to do?
No, you're talking out-
Outside.
Expensive project.
We're talking about the uplighting for the outside of the building.
Up or down, whichever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you only have one number, am I looking at this right?
$200,000, City Hall, down lighting is for the exterior.
250 is in the year before, that he hasn't done yet.
Yeah, but the 200-
Yes.
So, that's going to be plus, plus, plus.
Oh.
Just said it's real expensive to do.
200,000.
Look, they're carrying over the balances how they're funding this, which means they didn't do this, so now they want to decide-
Whether to spend the 200K on lighting or 200K on the interior.
Exactly.
But if you had 100 left over, you got 413, so you could do the interior and-
We could start.
Still have 100 and some for the-
Well, I would, I would flip it, I, and again, it's up to the council, and this is a vote for all of us, but I think then you could do the exterior, do the lighting project, and have the leftover to at least get started on the interior.
It could.
I'd do the lighting first.
Okay.
Because you're going to phase those floors anyway.
We are, so I just want to make sure that was still a consensus to move ahead that way.
It is.
Okay.
And I think, Mike, too, I would, if I were you, I mean, the direction I would give, I worked with, I know Nathan Callaher- I worked with, um, I know Nathan Callaher and Barbara Slonaker, they both were really interested in a lighting project, and in fact, if you circle back with Nathan Callaher, that's who, I had you pull those numbers, and I forwarded them to Nathan and to Barbara, if you remember.
Yep, I'll get Barbara.
They did want to really coordinate an effort in our community to do more of this, because, yeah, I was driving around one night, it's been a little while back, but I was thinking as far as, you know, we're talking the courthouse could do, you know, make sure that they're lighting up their facility, and then ours, we were talking about the Tyson Event Center, a couple other buildings and things like that, but we just need to showcase that, and there, if we're going to take this step, I mean, if we're committing in our budget, we should try to encourage others to take advantage of this moment too.
When you see that warrior, you know, when you drive around at night, that's really encouraging the rest of us.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
All right.
Um, can I ask one more question about the, the lighting? Where does the Vets Bridge lighting fall? Whose burden of responsibility is that, because it doesn't have the lights? And I, I followed up on that.
Camper deal.
And it, you can't get those light bulbs, or whatever it's called, that normally lights those up, so that's why it's gotten dimmer and dimmer and dimmer, and
You mean the purple lights?
Yeah, you can't get it anymore, they're obsolete.
Right, cause they're old helium, and the only way you're gonna light that bridge is if you light it from the top down, not try to light it up anymore.
So, we don't share any responsibility with that, it's the chamber, I mean, who's
Well, that's who did it originally, private funding, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't think anybody
Capital campaign or something, okay. I
If you had a million dollars, you could do that flag off the river like they did in, that I've showed you in Tennessee or where
With the lighting, how they set it up to look like?
Flag, yeah.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
That's the LED lighting that you can program.
Like a million two, the last time I checked. Why don't you just push, why don't you push the Floyd Trail back another year, and then you can
There you go.
I never push it back any, so.
You want that to be a technical adjustment?
If only, if only.
You wanna work here next week? Okay, Mike, great job.
Mike, would you ask Barbara about that, the bridge lighting as well? And find out if they're interested in, maybe, well, TSI could be involved in that, they're all about amenities, and I would call that an amenity.
Make, when you ask the question though, don't make it sound like we're gonna participate.
Yeah, we're not kicking in.
Right.
I mean, I would write a check personally.
Well, and that's, the conversation I had with Nathan and with Barbara was both like, they were looking elsewhere for funding, it wasn't us. They just came to me with this idea, and they knew that I, I was excited about that type of stuff too, so they just wanted to talk with me about it, they didn't even know we had this funding directed towards our project, so I mean, I think
Okay.
This is showing our commitment, I would just give them other options, cause the other one to think about, I haven't talked to Tim or Jessica about it, but I mean, Tyson, I know that those lights work, but they're burnt out right now, if you go by at night, the ones that are up in the columns that shoot up on top of the building, I think there are like one or two that are lit up right now, but the rest are burnt out.
That's a maintenance deal, they got money for that, that's ridiculous if they don't fix that, but they should change it to a colored bulb, it's white, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's colored glass though, is the only thing, so I don't know if you'd be
Yeah, but you could change the cu- bulb to a colored bulb.
Yeah.
Just get some of those that they put in the streetlights that are malfunctioning.
Yeah, exactly, get different, you never know what color you'll get.
Project eight eight nine zero one two, Annual Field Services Facilities Maintenance, page sixty six.
So, I know, uh, we have some, I think, progress on this as of yesterday, so I think we reached a verbal understanding with the landowner, that we will be purchasing that parcel as a standalone business, just land transaction, so, we'll be able to move ahead with utilities building, um, and probably go out for bid, uh, for grading and the vehicle storage immediately, and then just based on how this is financed, Teresa can speak to this, on how we have to incrementally finance this, and the offices would be, uh, bid separately from that, as an
Yes.
That facility.
Can you get
Due to the bonding limitations, this will have to be, um, three different projects.
It's a great state we live in, can you get, uh, which is it really stupid, because a private utility would not have to live under those, but, anyway, would you get us a memo on
Yeah.
That land acquisition, cause your flaky deals you've had thus far, and
There were, there's an LOU Marty drafted, so.
This flaky deal is a straight land purchase.
That's it.
There's no other contingents?
There's no other commitments with the, the landowner.
Nothing.
When was that agreement reached?
Yesterday.
Timing's perfect.
They found out Chris was gonna be here, and they said, we better get moving.
Why can't you just do a big building and pu- and then do the offices inside, inside the, do a big morgue and building, then put the offices?
Unfortunately, our bonding doesn't allow us to bond for more than a million dollars, so we have to do
We're limited on
You gotta do it separate.
That's how we are able to
Why? Because of the state law?
Unfortunately, we've talked to the legislators about that every year, we talked to them this year about it, it
I was gonna say, Chris, if you wanted to fight for something, man, we'll send you to the State House, you push the
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there, so, trust me.
There you go, man, exactly.
We actually choose this project as an example too, so this year, when we had the legislators here, we actually used this project as an example of how it's limited us, and our abilities.
High that we, it just ties our hands.
They're in February, but
And all it does is increase the cost, cause you're
Another thing I'd like to see is, when they were designing the designs, Mark Sims and John O'Brien really didn't get a say in the designs of our building, they kinda kicked them off of it, and then, I remember seeing some plans, and they go, well, these are the plans, but, I think Mar- I think Brad and John should be part of that design, cause they were, they know our department.
I agree.
I would agree with that as well.
Yeah, cause when Mark, when Mark was here, they would, they, Mark and John was able to see it, then they kicked them off of it, they weren't allowed to be part of the implanting and design, yeah.
Is that when Rick was kinda running that part?
Yeah.
No, they should, they're, they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, they're gonna be the ones using.
This an insulated building, or just dry storage type, basically, for vehicles?
Uh, vehicles, yeah.
So you're not instantly, not heating it?
Uh, I don't know about that.
We'd have to heat it because
I was gonna say, you gotta Because of the water
You gotta heat part of it, cause those trucks.
We'd have to heat it because of our sewer jet vacs always, they'll freeze
At least part of it's gotta be.
They'll freeze up.
All right, Mike, what's the, realistically, what's the nine, next ninety days we'll have the property, the real estate acquired?
I'll have to talk to legal. I would guess so.
If it's a straight acquisition, and it's been represented
We're gonna split, we have to survey it, cause we're splitting the parcel.
Okay.
So, we're splitting the survey cost with the current landowner.
That's probably two months.
I, it just depends on their schedule for survey. That couldn't take that long.
We can do, yeah, we can do a lot of other things to get ready for the closing on that, so then what
So we'll have the architect start on something, knowing this is, you know, coming.
What'd you spend, spend two hundred and sixty seven thousand last year on?
That's encumbered, it's not spent.
But yeah, it's just encumbered.
We've held them off, from spending anything until we got a
Mike, what would be our next step then, after the acquisition?
So we would bid out the grading and the vehicle storage.
Cause the city looked
The phase one?
Do like Iowa City did, when they built their public works building, they did, they did green, got green energy grants.
They did what?
Green energy grants, they got a, there's all kinds of that out there, when they built their public works building here, a year, a couple of years ago, Iowa's, Iowa City Public Works built a brand new building and used like
Different, remember, that's a different utility company. I don't think that's
And it's put out, is it a municipality?
Yeah.
Okay.
Iowa City Public Works.
I think
Let's look at that.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at any grant opportunities.
What's that?
We'll definitely look at any grant opportunities, but we have to weigh the, the grant cost benefit too.
Right, and plus, Mid-America doesn't have any of those grants in our tr- area anymore. I think Iowa City is Huh? Are they municipal, or are they alliance? They're not Mid-America.
No, they're not Mid-Americans, it's not
I think they're alliance.
Hmm, I think they're
I think they're alliance.
Thanks, Mike, for bringing that agreement
Thank you, yep, yep, there's progress.
To a conclusion.
The next department is Airport, Mike Collette, Project seven four nine zero eight four, Annual Airport Capital Projects, page seventy two.
So, most, all of our projects at the airport, um, are grant funded within, you know, ninety ten, a hundred percent, or ninety five five, so, when Teresa put up that big scary number at the beginning, that said a hundred million dollars, over the next five years, that's not city funded.
But the paper didn't do any better job, so we've done a terrible job with the newspaper on, that mean, they put the four hundred and some million dollars, and then they, you gotta read the article to understand that's for five years, we need to do a much better job, when we release this stuff, of bringing the paper in, cause they don't get it.
And talking them
And talking them through it, and showing them, it's ninety five five, it's ninety ten, we have to do a better job, because if, if you didn't know what was going on, and you opened the paper, like I did last night, you'd think, my God, how in the world are we, we're going broke in this community, and it, and they don't bother to say we historically run sixty percent of bond capacity, when we're actually way down this year, I'm just saying, we, we need to, it's our own fault, we don't educate the media here.
Well, and they don't know the questions to ask, that's what sometimes I
Well, then you gotta give them the answers before they ask the question.
No, I know, I'm saying, they are not proactive and investigative journalists, and so then, they're just
That's why we have to do a better job, cause I opened that paper, and I thought, that irritates me to know when, and I have to read in there that it's sixty six million, a whole lot of which is not even tax dollars, a whole lot of it's our funds, and a whole lot of it is, is grants, like yours and Trails, we just need to do a better job when we release this stuff, that, that, educating it, because the public doesn't have it, if you read the article yesterday in the paper, and you're a person that isn't very involved, you're thinking, what in the world is going on here?
Wonder my
And I read about what the heck is going on here, so, I just hope we can do a better job, better.
Well, and that's why we've tried emphasizing, and last time when we were talking to our delegation, and we had the press here, that's why I encouraged Teresa to explain a little bit more about the backfill, and why that was affecting us, and how that was impacting us, because so many times, look at the bond issues, another example where our hands are tied, you know, we're doing the best job that we can, but, if they don't ask that question or fully understand it, how do you report on something, so.
And so we won't, these projects don't move forward until we get grants for them, so, currently, we have entitlements, we have infrastructure bill money for five years, and then there's also discretionary infrastructure, which we've also applied for, those are competitive based, so, there's lots of opportunity, so all these are contingent on getting those grants.
But again, eight hundred, I, I don't understand how you can have design and engineering for a million two, and only do a million six in work, last year, I don't know how you can do a million eight and have eight hundred and forty five thousand. Again, I wish I had more kids that weren't, I would, I want them to be in
Which area are you looking at specifically?
I'm looking at twenty twenty four, a million eight in work.
Yep.
And eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars in design and professional services.
Well, that design is for a future project though, you know, potentially.
Listen, go down the whole list, it's way out of whack until you get to year twenty seven, if that's the case, and even that, ten percent, should be no more than that on flat work.
That's about where it runs. So, like in twenty
Here's what you do, you give me a memo from two thousand twenty three to twenty seven, give me the amount of the construction.
Okay.
And give me the engineering fee, and if it's, if it's ten percent, I'll buy you a stake at the best steakhouse in town. If not, Bob's buying us a steak at On your own
How'd you get sucked into that?
Cause I'm smart enough in my head to do that, that's, that's way more than ten percent, when you're running seventy five and eighty percent on some years. So I'll look forward to your memo.
Okay.
So the mayor, so the mayor's point on the newspaper article, who can follow up with that, just have a follow-up story, not to do anything other than just hear
I haven't, I haven't seen the article yet, I don't know if it was a citywide
I can reach out to.
Could you, could you do that?
You read the article?
I did not, but I can
Read it, and do
Cause nobody gets a paper but old guys anymore, I get that.
Read it.
He just called me an old guy.
He did.
And no one I'm
Mike, the next department is Transit, Mike Collette, Project seven three nine zero two zero, Annual Transit Capital Projects, page three sixty four.
Wow, Mike, you used to be a conservative, Mike, but you certainly have turned into a liberal with this stuff.
Well, again, grant dollars have, uh, dictate what we do here, so, anything in twenty four, the big part of that is eighty twenty, um, depending on, and we've applied for the maintenance garage grant twice, um, you notice the funding just came out for the next round, so we'll apply again, I'm optimistic we will get that, it's just a matter of when we get it.
You buy enough land that, there yesterday, to get, put this out there?
We did, they will fit two facilities, utilities and this one. Currently, this sits on about three acres, so, we need a little more space, but
I was gonna say, it's a little tight though.
It is tight, yep.
Project seven three nine zero two one, Replacement of Transit Rolling Sac, page three sixty six.
All these are just based on useful life and grant funds, and we buy buses as grant funds allow, so, this schedule you see is a best guess on, when things come up, it has to be in the tip to get funded, so, we put all these things as eligible, and we don't replace them until we get
These are small buses here.
Yeah, in twenty four, those are all small buses that have reached their life, yep.
We keeping up, Mike?
We are, I think on replacement, we're actually, we've turned the corner a little bit.
Kidding me, we're so much better, I mean, back in the eighties, those things were blowing so much black smoke, cause they were worn out, and
That's, that's my point, I was
Yeah, it, it kinda comes
I wanted to emphasize that.
It kinda comes in peaks and valleys though, so they age out together too, if we get a bunch at once, so
Right.
And they look good, and have they all been retrofitted with the GPS?
They've all been with the nunciators, yes, yep.
Good thing.
Yeah, that's a really good thing.
Mike
Tim for our town.
Mike, the only thing I wanted to bring up, as far as the buses and all that, you know, I love the wrapping the buses, I think it looks great, I think it's great advertising for the different people, heck, it's a return on invest, or you know, it's an investment in us and our buses, it brings money into us too. The one thing I would say is, I understand that people are not paying the extra to do the back of the bus, because you have all those cutouts and stuff, right, isn't it extra for that?
Uh, I don't know what you're referring to, by that.
The backs of the buses, a lot of times you're seeing people wrap the sides, and I think it's more cost, and more bang for your
We have an Air National Guard one that's on the back of a bus now, they've got the backside, yep.
That wraps the whole back, or just that little area?
Just that area, yep, but there's not much to the back of the bus, because
Correct.
Of just the structure.
Yep, and the only thing that I was thinking is, I just, for pure aesthetics, I just think it looks good when you can wrap the whole thing, even if you have it the same color, I just wish there was a way to do that, but maybe that's just foolish to think about even if you have it the same color. I just wish there was a way to do that, but maybe that's just foolish to think about that or or that it wouldn't make sense, I guess. Because I'm just thinking like there is what it's a, I forget if it was Mercy or the U P one that's all blue right now. And then you still have the pack of the bus that's got nothing on it.
We, we do have the option where they can just wrap the full sides and not the whole bus.
He wants the whole bus.
And I'm saying if they're willing to pay to do the sides, but they're like, gosh, we just can't pay to do the back. It's like, well, if it was all that color, I don't know how much more that is, but.
Yeah, it would just be on us for that cost to do that. Yeah.
Are we doing, who's doing the wrapping?
Uh, our contractor, A J Phillips currently is our bid contractor.
Or maybe we put something through City Permanent on it and just buy that space ourselves.
Good, you know, we have a recycling bus that we park with environmental services on.
So make just that space. We have our own design that, that we leave it in there all the time.
And we have two more coming online that just were ordered, so.
Cycling bins.
And those, those will be full buses actually in the next two.
Put our own message out on that.
Put code red on one of them.
Yeah.
We have a sign for code red, but we can do a wrap on the back.
Yes, just leave it.
We have a sign where?
On the bus, a bus sign.
Put it on the back so when you drive.
Put on the backs of all of them and just leave it.
I like that a lot.
Or a portion of.
I mean, it's premium real estate that's not being used right. I'm, I'm telling you, I understand, I do, I understand why companies want the side because you're like, oh, we have a lot of space and we can do that.
Yep.
But where do you see the bus? It's like, I'm always thinking when I'm parked behind it, I'm like, you are really, even if it's the smallest space on the bus, I'm looking at it for two minutes while I'm at a stoplight.
And you have a lot of stuff that doesn't cost, it doesn't cost much to do the back of a.
Doesn't.
I mean, you got, you got a tree problem in this, you know? You got a lot of things you could put on the back to educate our citizens for very little money.
When they're sitting in a stoplight, it's right there.
And probably as effective as most, a lot of people don't have Facebook.
That's right.
Trust me, I'm hearing that a lot. Yeah. People just don't see it or hear it.
Campaign.
Don't know that. Put that out. I mean, the police need officers.
Mm-hmm.
That we're hiring for city apartment, departments and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we run signs on their hiring for transit right now just because of, for hiring, so.
Okay.
Pretty bad cellphone.
Yep, it's on there. It's on the side of the bus.
Any trouble, any trouble, call Mike.
If I put mine on the city website, yours ought to be there too.
Yeah, it is.
Next department.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Wastewater and Environmental Services, Tom Pinkel. We're going to add a project.
Oh, I'm sure you are.
The first.
Tom Pinkel.
The first project is five-three-nine-zero-zero-six, page three seventy-six. It's here, we're actually doing a technical change to do some reworking of the plan and rename it to the wastewater treatment plant facility, plan improvement.
What page are we on?
Three seventy-six.
Three seventy-six?
Yep.
That's what I heard, yeah?
Yes.
What's this that just got handed to us?
The biggest sewer rate history, in the history of the city.
So that will replace the one that's in the book right now?
That's what I'm talking about.
Hey, Tom.
Hello.
So take out this three-seventy-five, seventy-six page and replace it with this. Is that what you're instructing us to?
We can, we can full punch it.
Really, oh, you tell me to not to worry, but I really hope this hazen. We have been down this road and.
Well, they seem much more confident and willing. I mean, you heard the presentation that they're saying, look.
Understand that. They're all confident when they're getting, they're getting this kind of money. I'm just, I just want to make sure. I think we have, for thirty million dollar fee, I think we have a right to write guarantees and they're gonna get this stuff done. How many times have we been told, we're gonna increase the capacity of your plant? Never has happened, ever.
I'm right there with you, Mayor. We can't drop the ball on this one, so we're, we're.
You don't get a chance, we don't get a do-over on three hundred and four hundred dollars. You don't get a do-over.
If, if I'm, you know, if I could have it my way, I'll be here for a long time and I don't want to have to deal with any fallout with this in ten, twenty years from now. So I want to get it right just as much as you guys.
We know.
Same boat, you're in.
No kidding. Because if the mayor's not up here, can you imagine if he ever lets himself retire and then he can just call you all the time and tell you about it?
I call him now when it stinks down there, because it does. The rest of you should too when it stinks because you gotta have so many complaints to generate.
I do, don't I?
Julie does, yep.
So this is replacing page three seventy-six?
Yes.
Not three-seventy-five, just three seventy-six.
I think the tone of the call may be different, but I do.
No, I'm, I normally text though. I don't, I don't normally call. I text because
I just want to do whatever we need to do to brace ourselves with what's coming.
Right.
Yep.
Please?
Yep.
Speaking of the smell, when I had my one down with hazen, one of the things that I stressed was the odor.
Yep.
And that that will be the perception to the public of the success of this treatment plant and it just will. Although it has much, there are many more layers to why we need it, capacity and flow and everything. To the public, to our constituents, the success of this project is going to be largely based on their nose. It, it very much is. And so that's going to be taken care of.
Yep.
So we're the sole contributor to the odor though. I thought there were other contributors.
Oh, no. Drive by that sewer plant on a day when it's overcast.
That and isn't there something with it?
Other industries or not?
Well, yeah.
I might have misunderstood.
The, the odor source is the industries located in the Seland area.
Mm-hmm.
As they convey through the conveyance system towards the plant, as you know, it gets lifted by lift stations and pumps.
That's it.
Draw and falls into the main trunks that releases sulfides in the air and causes these odors.
That's what's going to be cured?
Yep, we're gonna put odor control system.
Wait a minute, you still have odor at the plant though that you can get rid of.
Correct.
Listen, anything can, there's odor in sewer. I mean, let's not kid ourselves, but you have to treat it in, at all different sources. You can't just wait till it gets sewer plant. That's why we treat it out in the field. That's why we're making North Sioux treat it. But then when it gets there, it's ours. We own it and we better treat it so that, and stack it and pure. You know, you drive by Seaboard Triumph, you don't smell it like you smell Geleda because they put odor controlled equipment. Cost them, I think upwards to a million bucks, they told me.
And they're replacing it right now and it's, it's expensive. Yep.
So you can do it, but, but don't kid yourselves. It's our odor down there now when it gets to the plant.
To Julie's point though, Tom, how, I mean, with just what you stated, there's gotta be, there has to be something that the industries are going to do their part too.
You, you just made North Sioux put a, a station on their side of the river.
So with our sister city agreements, the connection points will be monitored for H two S and they have.
If someone that doesn't comply and we get the odor, they're going to blame the four hundred million dollar failure. Am I, you see what I'm saying though? The odor's coming from somewhere.
Yep.
And what Julie's saying is if that happens, this is what's going to get blamed. This is, this failed.
Or they're gonna say, you put this.
How do we address that?
Yeah, you put this on our back and did this and you didn't even address this, you know?
When we go out and select a consultant for the design of this, that we are going to demand that consultant hires a sub consultant that specializes in odor control. So we want to actual study, a plume study to see what, where the odors are coming from. Not a huge encompassing study because it's pretty clear, obvious where the odors come from. But we want that to just bulletproof our, ourselves, the city and know how to attack these odors. We're, we're gonna scrub them mechanically, meaning we're gonna collect the odors, run it through a system and clean it that way. And as it's going through the conveyance system, we are using chemicals aside with vapor control. So we're doing both styles of, in the future, we're going to do both styles of.
Yeah, but far too long here. The York Street Plant stunk like crazy.
Yep.
We tried to blame it, your department, not you, but tried to blame it on everything, but the reality was we had a problem there.
Correct.
You didn't have to be a genius to drive by that to go to a ballgame. So we gotta quit, we gotta quit acting like we're not part of the problem and we gotta become part of the solution ourselves.
I agree a hundred percent. So.
Can I ask for one more thing before you move on?
Yeah.
Just to make it crystal clear, that one example, and I have talked to you about it. Let's just use the example where the water comes under the river from South Sioux. It comes over and, because there's a big source of odor right in that area, so can you just kind of recap that before you move on as to what happens?
So the, the large flow of industrial waste from South Sioux goes to one main trunk. And it goes to their lift station called Bennett Lift Station and that pumps it under the river to our connection point, which is the Floyd Channel, the Floyd Interceptor, I should call it, not the channel. It's our seventy-two inch pipe coming from the Floyd Lift Station going into the, into the wastewater treatment plant. Their pipe connects right into that, but it's about eight feet above our pipe and it just, as it comes, it drops eight feet into that pipe. As it's dropping, oxygen is oxidizing sulfides and releasing it into. Right at that little box at the bottom of the Floyd Monument.
And that's escaping and it's going into the air. So when people drive by there, their nose knows.
Yep.
Right.
They often associate that with the wastewater plant.
And it's.
And the wastewater plant smells, but it, they think that it's the same, but.
It's not.
It's not, but they both smell really bad.
That could, that hooks into the Floyd Lift Station by freshers?
No, it hooks onto the discharged portion of the Floyd Lift. So it's the.
It's south of the Floyd Monument.
Yep, right.
I was gonna say, their, their industrial dumps way south.
Yep.
Their, their cit, their housing dumps and.
Yep, we just call that the Floyd Interceptor main trunk pipe.
I was gonna say, I didn't think that you could pipe that all the way back that.
No, it goes straight across, like you, like you said, it goes straight across.
That's a main culprit.
Yep.
For a big complaint when people in and out the interstate through.
But you'll get rid of that when they.
Yes, that will be gotten rid of.
Terminated with the completion of their plant, correct?
Correct. And they anticipate July timeframe.
Of this year.
Yep.
As we talked about, having them shut off so that you could do some work on it and there's.
They won't.
Yeah.
Apply with that, yeah.
Right. Well.
Have you taken the council down to the basement of the Floyd Lift Station ever?
No, do you get, you got a little tour?
I'm telling you, Tom.
He wants you to gas us off down there.
Camera down there for me and I can step on.
You gotta go down. You can't appreciate it till you go down.
It's deep.
There's not an elevator, right?
No.
Oh, I guess I'm out. I'm out on that one.
I'll go.
My leg's hurting enough.
Can you do a camera?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, if your legs hurt, I'm not going.
Yeah.
It's, it's about a forty-foot shaft.
Cap on it. It's way down. It's a lot.
It's a shaft?
Oh, far down.
Do you have to climb down a ladder?
There's two bars.
Forty feet. It goes way down under, it goes under the old Floyd Channel. That's what the pipe is I'm always telling you about.
Right.
It's a problem.
You know my fear of heights? I have a fear of depths.
Oh, you would there. And it's very confined.
Yeah.
Thank you for clearing that up because that is misunderstood. I, I talked up to you about that several times. I tell them, just tell South Sioux you're shutting down for forty-eight hours. Use your, because every city has to have a contingency and they are able to shut it off if they want to. They have.
They, they can't, but.
They can.
I bet.
Won't.
Project five-three-nine-one-one-seven, wastewater treatment plant asset renewal modifications, page three seventy-eight.
So this C I P is gonna change a lot due to the, the C I P that you just saw. Three, five-three-nine-zero-zero-six, the, the big, the big one will actually take over a lot of this C I P that you're looking at now. Within the last three, four weeks, the facility plant's almost in its finalized state with last, was it weeks ago? We had the special meeting and talked to the public and we also talked to the industries. So with that, we've modified this one quite a bit and eliminated quite a bit of things, knowing that we're gonna stay at that location. So we, we're not gonna put Band-Aids on knowing that five years from now, we're gonna fix it anyway.
Tom, so how should I mark this? What you've changed or what you're?
So for F Y twenty-three, you can see there's some things crossed out.
We'll just, we'll just get you a new sheet.
Yeah, we can.
You know what disappears.
Yep.
But.
Everybody could hear what we're doing. We'll get a new.
We're sharing everything? I mean.
Yeah, I could briefly discuss.
Okay.
Yep. So the, the approved twenty.
You don't want to. I mean, if.
I would, I think it would be better served to have something down in writing.
Would be better, okay, let's, let's do that.
And the only reason this is still existing is because we didn't know which direction we were gonna go when we were creating these C I Ps or updating.
Oh, I.
So now we know the direction.
Sorry, okay.
I can, I'll send you an updated one. But if there's, like this year, for instance, we're not, we're gonna save three point, not save, but we're not gonna spend three point nine. Next year, we're not gonna spend two million. The year after that, we're not gonna spend seven point five. The year after that, we're not gonna spend three point six. So it's gonna be just the standard things to keep our plant going until our, until the.
Council member Moore, we'll bring back it, we'll bring it back at wrap up and then we can go through it then.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm just always getting a little uncomfortable when we're writing, individuals are writing things down.
I appreciate that, Bob. So, no, thanks. And it will come back to us, Tom.
Project five-three-nine-one-four-three, annual wastewater treatment plant building maintenance, page three eighty.
This is just our standard maintenance C I P where we are just replacing HVAC systems, A C units. Our main culprits, we have a garage door that we need to replace, but the main ones are, that keep, are, that are ongoing are the the HVAC systems and the A C units. As you could imagine, the, the environment down there is highly corrosive. So we go through quite a bit of HVAC systems on, on our buildings that are more of the preliminary side of the treatment.
Project five-three-nine-two-zero-seven, lift station improvements, page three eighty-three.
This one you can see in the out years, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you see some bigger numbers there. Those are going to be encompassed in the very first C I P you saw. So those millions of dollars that you see there for the lift station improvements for odor control, those are gonna be eliminated from the C I P because they're a part of the main problem.
Encompassed in them.
Yep.
Do you feel comfortable bringing an updated sheet to wrap up?
Correct. Yep, I can do that. Yep.
We can discuss those then like we did the other. Okay, perfect.
No problem.
Project five-four-nine-one-six-five, Ravine Park Oak Savannah Restoration, page three eighty-eight.
I wanna know how much renewable fuels money we're collecting.
I think, do you want me to bring that back at wrap up?
I can certainly. Get a memo this week. I'd like to know what Red Flex money has, is and.
Yep, I can do that.
And what you projected it to be and I wanna know what.
We don't program much for Red Flex, so.
I understand you, but you do.
A little bit, yep. A little.
Not under the table, but in the back room. You don't put it in the budget. I get that because you spend it on.
Safety.
Yeah, and you've got, you've got some projects at the police station that qualifies for that money.
Yep.
In training.
Training facilities.
Is that how you funded those?
Um, no, not right now, but we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I certainly would like to do.
Yep, we can look at, the training facility isn't till next year, but the, the lift and the cameras are this year. We could swap out that.
Or honestly, if those basketball hoops are in danger of falling over, that'd be.
No, but we've kind of said.
No, it's public, it's usually.
Public use though, right?
Fire, fire.
You can do some fire sta.
Fire station stuff.
Stuff.
Yep, we could do that too.
And you probably get even more. I had a guy from Riverside tell me that he feels really close to the police department because you never move that camera. And I kind of got to agree with him. I don't know why we leave them for months, but how the heck do I know?
Military road.
Yeah.
My wife's paid that fund three times now.
Well.
Well, maybe it's a good place.
Let's leave it there.
Matthew, Matthew's capturing that part of my income. That's fine.
Offsetting.
Yeah, no kidding.
Um, five-four-nine-one-six-five, Ravine Park Oak Savannah Restoration, page three eighty-eight.
This C I P, we're going to, we've talked with Parks and Rec and we're gonna move this to every other year after this year. So we believe that it doesn't need to be mannequered and maintained as much as of, as often. But this is.
Thing we ever got into. It never ends.
No kidding. And I didn't realize, I'm all about this and I think it's good for the environment and I think it's gonna help the area, but I had no idea. Come on, if you let nature take its course, it's not doing this annually. I mean, you look at Yellowstone and other areas. You're talking about decades in between something, unless you live in California, but.
But then you also have grazers, you have animals that are taking care of it too. A lot of the, like a lot of our wildlife around here, a lot of our.
We talked about bringing in goats.
Oh.
Yeah. Didn't we talk about goats?
That was a topic on.
That, that takes care of it because they, it all grows back. They take it right at the base, take all the plants away and then it grows back next year.
Well, I'm glad we're at least looking at every goat.
We should think about.
Let's get some farm animals.
Some.
Come on.
Think about feeding some milkweed.
Remember, I was opposed to it from year one. Don't forget that, my friend. Don't forget it.
Project five-four-nine-one-nine-six, Pulaski Park Drainage Improvement, page three eighty. Excuse me.
So this project is addressing deteriorating the two big storm drains that come into this Pulaski Park. They're seventy-two inch lines. Addressing that, we've actually found some what's called sponsored S R F project money. This is money that if you spend money at the water plant or the wastewater plant using S R F loans, the interest is actually given back to the city after the project's completed and paid off. So we are, we got a one point nine million dollars sitting there for.
I was gonna say, that's gotta be a pretty paycheck.
Yep, yep. So we, that project was five, six years ago, that one point nine million dollars was set aside for peri, peri drainage system. But it, it doesn't seem like it's gonna work for that. So we're working with the D N R right now to see if we can allocate those funds towards this project.
Where, where are you doing this? On which side of the Pulaski?
The ballpark side.
Right? East side.
Yep.
But east of the ballpark or?
West of the, west of the ballpark.
Like, we did that, a project there not very long ago.
I'm not aware of that.
Because it never hooked up. There was a, there was a box culvert over here. I'm right. I know what I'm, this one, I know. Well, it's not been ten years ago. Hasn't been longer. Maybe we did it the last, I know we addressed this before. I've been here.
About it several different times, but it's been.
But we did some work down there.
Alex and Matthew born.
We were going to put a.
We get, we did some work down there.
I don't know.
Because it, that doesn't, it didn't line up with the.
Something to do with the railroad, didn't it?
The box goes under the railroad and it didn't line up. So I guess I'd like to.
Can you check that?
Tell me, yeah, tell me more about what you're gonna do because this has been a deal where we can't seem to figure out what we're doing and we just spend money down here.
What, what, what are you gonna do with this?
You're gonna drain that whole, it drained a huge area.
Right.
It drains a lot of the.
That whole piece?
Yeah.
It's taking a lot of water from...
Oh, no, it takes it from way up and poke, so, as we've...
As it comes down.
There's an old vein in that hill, yeah.
It, it drains a lot of area, and even on that hill, it drains over this way and then it drains down toward Pulaski, but it all comes together in Pulaski, that's why you got a north and a south 72-inch tube.
Yep, yep.
The problem's not, it's not so much there, it's getting it, it's getting it over to the Floyd Channel.
Yep, exactly.
Which, there's the box.
Well, I'll, I'll look deeper into this, I'm not aware of any activity that's happened down there recently, so we'll, we'll check that out, but it's, this has been on the city's radar for quite some time.
Yeah, it has.
Well, how long ago do we think this was? 10 years, 20 years?
Oh, it, it, this, this, talking about this started back in the 90s. They just haven't, never done it right.
Just see where you come up with.
Yeah.
I want...
We're really preliminary stage with it.
Then a memo or do you...
You just figure out what we've done and why it didn't work and that...
Where we've been, where we are now.
Yeah, where we, where we going.
Go a memo, just kind of, of a history of what's happened.
Yeah.
Mayor, was Alex and Matthew born when that work was done?
No. No. Their parents might not have...
Yeah, no kidding. Tom wasn't either.
It was a lake when I was, when I was a kid.
Huh? My husband talks about that being a lake.
Bull heads and craw daddies in that lake.
Yep.
What are the items again in wastewater that are coming back to us, Teresa?
Um, project 539117 and project 539207.
And then a memo on 196.
One ways, there was one-lane street back in the day.
And they're combining some of them.
There was an outlet on the very northwest corner that went under the one street.
I used to go down there and ride my bike and take a fishing pole during the school...
And a knapsack over your shoulder.
Yeah, during the school day. I'm on to you, I know what you were doing Monday through Friday.
You couldn't go there if there were too much traffic.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready to break for lunch, are you?
Well, I'm, it's here, so...
Well, let's do it.
Thanks, Tom.
We're on schedule.
Thank you guys, see you next Saturday.
We'll break for lunch and we'll be back in 30 minutes.
Sorry, guys.
Sorry.
I was going to say, I feel bad about...
Okay. Next department up is Economic and Community Development, Marty Doherty. The first project is 611-001 Cities Share New Residential Development, page 84.
Marty.
Good afternoon. I think it's af- almost. Good morning.
Close enough.
Yeah, the residential development, that's a dig fund. We have funds adequate to meet the current projects. And then, you know, obviously in the few- there'll be more projects we're working on that will be funded down the road. But I think, I think there's money that had been moved around to meet the current, current projects.
You're actu- is this right? You're working with, with three different projects with over 200 housing units?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think you're familiar with, with most of those, but.
Not really, so put it in a memo to me, would you?
A memo?
Or talk about it Monday. I've got- you know who they are, Dan?
Yeah.
No, they're, no, but they're not going to my church.
Oh, they're not.
Again, that lands too.
Let's get a memo.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do a memo since it's still confidential.
Okay.
Next project, 663-122 Floyd Valley Redevelopment, page 86.
So, yeah, thi- this is, I'll let Renee comment on this a little bit because we've been doing some interesting work. I think even just this week, we had a meeting with EPA, so.
Yeah, for this project, we're looking at potential land acquisition, opportunity acquisitions, as well as, we just had a meeting with the EPA yesterday on concepts for the Bacon Creek Channel, and they're going to provide us with the final report that has some exciting concepts in it. So, we're kind of moving forward in that direction.
That was a, a grant we received, so that's being done. They hired a consultant on our behalf.
Yeah, the EPA provided a technical assistance grant for us to work with a consultant to provide some solutions for the Bacon Creek Channel.
Great.
You know, if you had a real innovative plan, you'd make it like the Riverwalk and.
But that was discussed.
I know.
On that.
But it won't ever happen.
It was discussed, though. Many concepts like that.
Remember, in the river, in the, they pump water nine months out of the year in, in San Antonio. There's no river there, you know that.
Well, no, but we talked about turning it into a dry river bed so that it could still be enjoyed. But again, that was way before Alex and I were on this council, so nothing happened.
We are. Well, I, I wish you had moved it fast on the Floyd River Trail connect.
Oh, I knew.
Well, I'm on that now. I am on that now that I know it's that important, Mayor. Mayor?
I had no idea.
Now that I know it's that important. Project 663-150 Speculative Building Development, page 88.
Speculative building.
Why do we keep putting money in here? We never do anything with it. So, you might recall that we had a fairly large balance last year, and we ended up shifting that to the Harbor, or, excuse me, Alheans Drive Waterline. There's a segment of water line that needed to be infilled there. So, we took the balance from the spec, which is, runs right past the same site, and that's a project engineering is bidding out soon to be built this year. No?
No, I, that's, we're never going to build a spec building, so you just will take anything out.
We had, we had held off because of the price of, of construction materials had gone up so much, but we can look at.
But it sounded like you're bidding it now, right? Wasn't that what the memo is?
No.
We put it off, put it off because of the price of the building, but now you're going back to see what it is, or no?
Well, we haven't yet. We can, we have a, a plan. We have a design for a building.
Didn't we have it designed, like, thinking about putting it someplace else? And we decided not to?
When we, when we redid Alheans Drive, we ended up with some pretty nice property parcels here, and, and we've, we decided that this would be a good, we have a site plan that shows actually two, where two could be built on city-owned land, and we have a design for a building. We just, we took it to bids, if you remember, like, two years ago, and it were just so high that we held off, and we can do it again.
Did you show this to Old Dominion, that site?
Um.
Saying that is put public record.
We have showed it, we have shown it to, to, to different prospects. I think we did talk to them about that. They chose a site in Southbridge, as you know.
Right.
But, but yeah, we have shown it to other prospects, that's, that's correct.
What's the style of building?
But we are going to, we needed a, we needed a water line on that segment of that new road to be, to be able to serve the site.
And why didn't we put a water line in when we built the road?
I don't know, Mayor.
Don't go there, Mayor.
We had RISE funds to do that. The RISE funds don't cover utilities. I mean, that's probably why, but I, I don't want to speak for engineering, but, but we built a very beautiful road, and it's, it opened up all this land for development. And we had spec building funds to pay for the.
What, what style of building is the concept?
Just the metal, you know, type that we've built before, the 50,000 square foot.
Fifty?
Fifty, yeah. That's kind of a.
With a loading dock.
I think we should pursue it.
With a loading dock.
I think we should pursue it as well.
With a loading dock, with really nice loading dock.
Yeah.
Yes.
A couple loading docks.
Some water.
I think you should continue to pursue it.
Or put it out to bid, or what?
Project 663-162 Southbridge Rail, page 90.
Alex, remember, you pay a contractor the interest until it sells.
Right.
Oh, okay.
We're carrying the note for him.
It doesn't take as much money as you think because the contractor's gone to the bank and carrying the.
Right.
So, are we in favor of pursuing the spec building?
I am.
I am, too.
Well, and throwing it out to bid, right? I mean, isn't that the next thing?
I don't know.
Marty?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't the next thing be to put it out for bid and see what those costs come back at?
Yes.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I'd say, I think you have at least two council members that say, yeah, they would.
I hear you.
It's such a process anyway, we may as well get started.
Okay.
663-162 Southbridge Rail, page 90.
I think this is primarily the rail that we're putting in right now for Cold Link to fund that, so.
663-164 Business Park Tech Studies.
Wait, go back. Isn't, isn't some of this RISE money? Isn't, isn't some of this RISE money?
Not for— I thought there was a rail RISE program.
Yes, it is. It's, it's matching for that. Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Is there funding for it here, or is that our dollar amount, or...
Can you flip the page?
It's not in the project, or is it...
I'm, I'm seeing that. Was that already in there, maybe?
I don't know.
I, yeah, we do have the rail—
Yeah, you got rail 50% or something.
Yes, we do. I, I'll get you a summary of that.
Do you want us to update this? We can update this project sheet and bring it back to wrap up.
Yes, I'll bring that back to wrap up. You're, you're correct. We, it doesn't look like we're showing the, the right rail rise, but...
663-164, Business Park Tech Studies, page 92.
Use these all the time?
Like, these are warranted and valuable? Yes? Okay.
This four?
Should be adequate.
Oh, site certification, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing we're doing there with, with the—
Wait a minute, the state fund's part of that, too, Debbie told me once the other day.
Part of...
Don't they, they still participate in part of the—
For certified site?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can get— this goes beyond that. We might have to do a soil test or something, you know, for land we're looking at, doing some of that right now.
Results.
Right, but I think, I think Debbie will pay for some of that.
Yeah.
Department does. Are, are we not applying for it?
I, I— let me check on that, Mayor.
Okay. Because I, we just had lunch with her two weeks ago, and she told me that, but maybe not.
Okay.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, this would, this would be for expenses not just related to site certification, but, but we, we could. We'll check and see how the, what the state will pay for.
Project 663-197, Downtown Development, page 94.
This, this is primarily for opportunity acquisitions for site assembly and so on?
I was going to ask. I have a note written down. Just talk to me about what that's been used for, what we're doing with that. The 300K that we have or had, what was that, or where is, what do we anticipate with that?
Still there.
Still there.
As we've looked at properties in the downtown area to acquire for redevelopment and work with the developer, that's what— so, we have been working on several different projects and, I guess, more of a confidential nature, but, but we're, we're always trying to do that in the downtown, of course, in the city, not just downtown, but, so, sometimes that can be critical to getting, making—
You're not wrong.
—to move. Move forward.
But I mean, is this, do we have a shortlist or ones that we are looking at, like, the— okay.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all.
Project 663-211, Blight Removal, page 102.
What page?
102.
This is Darrell's area?
Hello. Yeah, this is the fund that we use, of course, for bigger, larger cleanups, blight removal in neighborhoods, and then, of course, more prevalently is the demolition of unsafe structures. So, big project this year is to finish up with the, the old Y building, 722 Nebraska, on the horizon. After that, accumulation of funds will be used to take down the Swift Building, the old Turkey Plant down in the stockyards, constantly being vandalized, constantly has vagrants in it. It's also a big plant, hangout for kids, very unsafe, open elevator structures and things like this.
Who owns that?
There's a gentleman out of Sioux Falls that purchased it a couple of years ago when he first took it, possession of the building. He was very cooperative, and, and he was going to do something with it right away, and was down, every time I've made a phone call, he was down the next day to secure the building and make sure it was safe again, and since the last probably 18 months, he's kind of nonexistent, so...
Which place is this?
It's next door to the Iowa Vet. It's right on the curve there, across from Home Depot.
Old Turkey Plant.
The big one, right?
The big one, yeah. It's with all the graffiti and such on it, yeah.
Can't miss it.
It's a very, very sound structure. It will take at minimum an equal amount as what the Y is taking, if not more money to do that one.
Well, is the Y the 400 and the 325?
The Y is probably right at 700,000, 750,000 for the remaining portion of that.
Right, so we have 400 for this year.
And the 400, if the 400 is, is part of this, as we're balances right now through the fiscal year here, through the building season, will be down to approximately 8,000 in that fund, once I'm done with the Y and the other structures I've got.
Oh, okay, the cash balance here.
At the bottom down there, yes.
Okay, yep.
I didn't, I did see for next year that there's been an ear tag on there for some work with the Parks Department of some of those funds as well, so... Thank you.
Project 663-221, Phase Two Home Investment Partnership.
Jill Wonderland Neighborhood Services Manager. This project aims to keep properties off of the red tag list that we were just discussing. So, this is funded with franchise fee settlement funds from several years ago, and we utilize this as a supplement to a lot of our housing rehabilitation programs for those that are 80% area median income and below. And so, it allows us to do a lot of improvements to homes that, if uncorrected, that would possibly lead to those homes being on the red tag list at some point. So, it looks like we're just spending it a little bit slowly, but that's by design. Our funding policy is we use all of our grant funds first, and then if we have other improvements that we need to make to the structure to make it safe and healthy for the occupants, then we use our phase two funds.
And, and that's why you're carrying this over?
Yes. Yep, so the funds, we utilize up to $10,000 per property, and we secure that with a five-year forgivable loan.
I thought I saw in here the number of properties, but...
Um, so there's two different options. One is, covers the houses that are currently on the red tag list. We've done a handful of those, probably five or six at this point. Over this last, from July 1st till now, we've done five under our emergency repair program, and we have one in construction right now.
Project— sorry, go ahead. So, the money that we keep track of on the Housing Trust Fund Board?
Mm-hmm.
We're using that up first?
Yes.
Before we go to this, right?
Exactly.
Okay. That's the way, we just had our meeting, and we're awarded 275,000.
This year.
Yes. Improvement from prior years, so, and that's used on these type of projects as well.
Yep, and that'll be going to council on February 6th.
Thanks. Project 663-222, Downtown Aesthetic Improvements, page 106.
This is, this is funds that have been used this year, being used for more lighting, lighting projects in the downtown and some sidewalk crossing improvements on, on historic Fourth Street. So, I believe there are some more lighting projects planned, so...
Because this is in—
I'm all for this, but I think about Peters Park, Transit, South St. Avon, Peters Park. What a nice corner to have some of this decorative lighting that's spanning across the streetlights. What about your main entrance in the Riverside from Military Road? One— just don't know why we don't do more of this everywhere, rather than, we gotta do it in the downtown.
Well, the—
Well, the decorative downtown lighting—
No, no, no. The festoon lighting is privately.
Yeah, that was private funded.
That was private donations. Each one of those projects has been all private.
Under the skywalks and all that's?
That was downtown partner—
No, that's downtown partners paid for them.
Yeah, but they've got their own taxing district.
Correct, correct.
Right.
And you don't allow that any—
I was just meaning the festoon lighting with private funding.
Right.
Um, I, just a quick mention on that. We did something similar in West Seventh Street. We used, if you look at our facade improvement program, we kind of call it corridor improvements. We've done some other things with those funds besides just facade. So, in future years, we can definitely do that, come up with a plan and priorities with the neighborhoods, and then have a second line item there for facade and then also other improvements.
You've got some really nice lighting, those kind of bar lighting over there, West Seventh on the bridge, and that really makes a difference. So, to your point, Mayor, I agree. It should be freckled throughout the city.
And the lighting here, correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor brought it up, the last time or the conversation we were talking about was really the funding that we— look, additional officers in our downtown necessarily, they can't be everywhere at all times, so we talked about improving lighting from a safety side of it as well. And so, this was—
The 12,000.
Isn't this just supplementing for downtown partners to be able to light that corridor?
It's a partnership, yep.
Yeah, I believe so.
And this is, the 12,000 is just a portion of it.
But I agree, once downtown partners, I mean, if we like those lights that we're doing along, that we're updating, so it's not the globes, it's more down lighting to be able to actually light up the sidewalk. I agree to the mayor's point that it's like, I think you should have some continuity throughout a community that then, that's what you're using throughout, and that's where you're implementing it.
I think it could work in other areas, too. I agree with that.
I do. And part of the design idea on this is this Sternberg post that we have, these caps are the only thing that are being replaced, not the entire pole. They are retrofitted in an aftermarket application, and they weld some kind of a ring, and that's it, then they fit on there. So, much more cost-effective because in the research done through downtown partners, those Sternberg posts are like the most expensive around. So, that's very expensive.
We make these decisions consulting with the business owners as well, that would be affected by it. I think they should have some say in what goes and what doesn't, and what they think will be consistent with what their business—
Yeah, I think they would really appreciate an update.
Important to do that.
Project 663-301, Downtown Facade, page 108.
This facade program was a partnership with downtown partners. They provided 25,000 to do design work for projects that were approved for funding, and then the city's 200,000 was used to implement those projects. And in fiscal year '23, we received 11 applications totaling over 535,000, and we awarded six applications for the 200,000. So, it was very well received for the first year.
Also, if you look at the boundary, we did extend the boundary to the north, which was suggested by the mayor last, last year, so we did that, so... When we have funds, we'll, we'll go up to the north, so...
Well, and in my opinion, I'm, I would have done two separate zones. I think, I mean, that's my opinion. I think we need to make sure that we're focusing on the area where a majority of the commerce is done, in our downtown, where people are living and, and working and shopping and all of that, where we want more of that directed. But I do agree that the north downtown or that area is in need as well. I just— you're trying to spread out, what is it, 200K? Look at the, look at the size and the number of properties, is what I would urge. I mean, I forget if I, I forget if staff provided a memo or not, or if I was texting Reagan about that, but the number of properties, the number of size of what is available in, say, Leeds or in Morningside, the Peters Park, or on West Seventh, the number of properties and the number of square blocks, you already were taking the downtown facade program that was the largest and had the most properties that were going to compete for these, and then you expanded it into a northern zone as well. It's just comparing apples to oranges.
There won't be much in the northern zone because the, the Pierce Street had its own facade program for years around here.
And was that kind of the north area that now it encompassed? So, that could be a separate one, is what you're saying, or what do you mean?
Yeah, I don't care, but, but it, there won't be much up there, is what I'm saying, even if they do—
Because they had been doing—
Because they've had facade program money before up there, long before we had it anywhere else.
Project 663-305, Northside Industrial Development, page 110.
As you know, we're working on a few projects there. Probably bring you more information later on those.
Okay. Project 663-306, CBD Slum and Blight.
Yeah, what, what do you— another deal, if you're using CBD, that's downtown, right? So, how is that different than the 500,000 a few pages back? And what, what have you bought that, that, do we know?
The 300.
I think the CBD slum and blight is more for the, near North Side and probably going west across Wesley Parkway, trying to purchase some of those blighted properties.
It says you have.
Say that again?
Says anticipated expenses.
They haven't done it yet.
You guys have some sites located that you're going to spend that in the next few months?
Are you talking about the slum and blight?
112, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working—
Let me guess. Yeah, let me guess. Would I be guessing right?
Probably.
Okay.
I mean, we've looked at areas in and around Prospect Hill area, of course, here in our side, and those have, those have been discussed at some length. We'll have to continue those discussions, but that was the, one of the areas we were looking at, so...
Project 663-310, Boys and Girls Home Court Street, page 114.
We were recently awarded some additional EPA funds for this property to do a phase one and phase two, so we're in the process of that now. The phase two should be done early spring. And then we also have additional funding to move forward with the planning and reuse and revision plan for the property, which will hopefully be done in the summer. And then the additional funds will be used to hopefully assist the developer in redeveloping the property.
The EPA is really stepping up and helping with, leading the charge on this, right?
Correct, yep. They've been a great partner for us.
They have about, what do you think, girl, five, six million, seven million to tear it down? Do they have that kind of money?
We'll have to ask.
Have to ask. The last bid to take it down was three million to make it shovel-ready, not including the remediation, so...
If I said five or six million.
Right, so the hope is the EPA will take care of the remediation so we can get it back down to a manageable, you know, number, so I don't know.
I'm going to get her a PMA positive mental attitude.
You have to. We're, we're talking honestly now, we're talking about 14 acres in the heart of Sioux City, that it sat like that, it's, it, it needs to be revitalized. So, this is a great groundwork, so when somebody else is paying the bill, figure out if it's possible.
Yeah, I think we have some great assistance for this, but yeah, we'll have to find more funds.
Look at the mayor's face over there. He's not believing me.
We have, we have shown—
I'm all for it if it works.
We have shown the—
If we can make that into a nice neighborhood again—
I didn't say you couldn't.
Oh, my gosh. I know, you told me to go for it.
But, you know, 20 million, you can do a lot with the—
40 million, you can do—
We have had interest—
Right.
40 million, you can do twice as much.
And I'm not saying that the city will foot the bill, but I'm saying that if the EPA's footing the bill for the, doing the legwork, let's let them.
We have had interest from some developers as well, as you know.
Yeah, there has been. First, I would like to see a wrecking ball. I'm going to stick a dynamite. Project 663-311, Southeast Development, page 116.
This is basically for opportunity acquisitions to do new development in an area that would be conducive to things like data centers and that.
Project 663—
You can use general obligation bonds to buy property?
And donut?
Yeah.
Which end?
But it has to be in the city limits.
Yeah.
Okay.
663-370, Commercial and Business Signage, page 120.
Yeah, I, this is normally Ann's, Ann's area, but I think—
Still got 183,000 there, Julie, to put to sign up.
I've got a new plan, so—
I was going to say, it's been my understanding that Marty, Matt, and other individuals have kind of been in conversations to see about what could be done, whether it's with Mid-American or other apps—
Yep, can be.
—to repurpose and do some different things out there.
I, if you want more information on this, I'd have Ann, Ann give you an update.
Want an update at wrap up?
Sure.
Okay. We'll ask for an update at wrap up. Yeah, she'll have the information by then, too. We were just chatting about that on Friday.
Okay.
Project 663-379, Airport Commercial Development, page 122.
This is our continuing effort to redevelop the area, just at the entrance to the airport, and had a number of discussions about, about that, how to approach that.
Project 663-382, Northside Commercial and Residential Development, page 124.
I want to go back.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
There's talk, no secret, the guards looking at how they do their gate in the future.
future, I guess I'd hope that we would have some sort of an idea of what that looked like, looks like, I'm all for what they're trying to do if they can end up doing it, but I think it'd be nice to, for us to get on the front side of that and see how the lots lay out and that sooner rather than later. I believe the airport's starting the master plan update on next Friday, this coming Friday? Okay. I got invited to the- Okay, well, just make sure that- I know that, I'm sure that's something that will be discussed as part of the master plan, we'll keep you up to date on that.
663-382 Northside Commercial and Residential Development, page 124.
You have a project, because you're putting a lot of money in there. We have a, some, yeah, we have a project we're working on, mayor, that- This is not necessarily residential. Commercial and residential, mayor, so.
Thanks.
Project 519-383 King Hills Development, page 126.
Yeah, this was a, a project that we were working on that did not move forward, as you, I think as you know, very actively working on, that was, we anticipated some street improvements and so on, that, to this point has not moved forward, that was an out-of-town developer that was buying some land from the private owners. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I don't know. Did that deal fall completely through then? What's that? That fell completely through. That's my understanding, yeah, I was told that, recent, just recently. Bob asked, keep driving to Omaha, and- Yeah, he did. We, we had this in here because- We were throwing money at that baby. We had this in here because at the time the budget was developed, it was still a live project, and I've been just told recently that it's not, so if you wanted to move back-
Bring it back to wrap-up and move it out, as a technical change?
We can do that. Project 519-384 Gordon Drive I-29 Development, page 128.
Renee, if you want to talk about this, this is another area where we're working with EPA technical assistance, and-
Yeah, the EPA is looking at the Floyd-Dace area, and they're putting together a highest and best use plan for us, so that we can kind of see what would complement the downtown along with the riverfront, and what could be developed there as a feasibility study, and also highest and best use for the land.
You need to really thank the EPA for, they are doing things that we could never get.
Absolutely.
What did I say that gentleman's name was, I just came across the card.
Mel Pins, he's with the DNR.
Yep. I need to send him an email, I have his card, and I was just thinking about how helpful he was.
He's very helpful.
He is, he spent so much time answering questions when they delivered that first check, and we went over to the Woolies Theater, and, oh, he talked to us, and he was so knowledgeable, and he really did, in my opinion, lead us to believe, if you ask for it, and you show us, you know, that you've got some areas, we'll help, there's money to be had, so, very helpful gentleman.
719-197 Southbridge Development, page 133.
Obviously a very active area, we're putting in infrastructure related to Coldlink, and there's quite a few utilities and so on that are going in, along with the street construction underway right now, and all the work associated with that, and obviously we've acquired additional land, and have continued to talk to other landowners, and we'll have some updates on, for you on that soon.
Project 719-201 Southeast Morningside Area Improvements, page 136.
Yeah, this was a, a project that Jeff and the planners had worked on for some catch-up, I believe, for some, some infrastructure that was, is needed in that area down there, part of, part of the overall development of area just south, southwest of the, of the interchange there. Where? Yeah, I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with this, I, I did talk to Jeff about it, and I believe it's, it's some utility work that, that needs to be done, but it's part of the annexation process, I can look into that a little bit more, but, yeah.
Want him to bring back information at wrap-up?
Yeah, I can't quite understand what they're talking about here, I don't know where he's talking.
Yeah, we'll bring it back for hopefully-
You're talking of the area which is- I want to say it was like a water, a water utility, but- Well, it's where your water tower is, basically.
Groundwater tower?
No. No, it's a water tank off of, off of Cratchinville Road. No, I think, mayor, I think it's more, sort of in the Menards area, behind- Yeah, but we got a water tower northeast of, we got a water tower just northeast, you got a water tower northeast of there, of the DOT building. Yeah, we do, it was built a few years ago, yeah. Right, and it, and that's, and that is in the city, but I don't understand- I, I think this, again, I think this is this area down behind Menards, in that area, and I think there was a, I want to say a water project that needed to be done, it was kind of passed, promised in the past maybe, and hadn't been completed, if I understand it, I, I can follow up on that if you'd like. Is this the Yule Farm that we got sued on a few years ago, where that bridge is going underneath the? I, I don't think so, maybe nearer there, but I don't- If you look at the map, sub-subject. I, I, again, I think there was, when that annexation took place a number of years ago, there was a promise to put in some infrastructure. Yeah, that's why we got sued by the Yules years ago. Okay, I, I'm not familiar with that, but- I had to go testify, and I wasn't even on the council at the time, so that's got to be down in that valley underneath. I think so.
Behind Menards and Sulane Christian.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure Wyatt Rose came, came in here in this year, but I know that was something Jeff had been working on, I, I can find out more about that if you'd like. I think this was just design here, so, I don't know what the overall cost-
Project 719-295 Lyons Park Investment Area, page 138.
This continues the work that we've started in our Lyons Park Special Investment Area, this is where we're concentrating a lot of CDBG and CV funding, which was those CARES Act funds that we received last year, or the year before, kind of all over there. We had a public meeting back in August, and we prioritized with the property owners and the neighborhood residents what they wanted to see in the park there, and so that was a great meeting, had, I think almost 100 people showed up, after that, we did an RFQ to get the design services, we are still negotiating with the consultant that was selected, because reality kind of hit, and it was a lot more expensive than we anticipated it being, so I think we're close to getting a contract together for design, but we'll probably have to break the park improvements up into two phases, and then, so we're gonna, we're planning on doing the design for the park throughout the summer, having more public input, and then also, we're going to do the design of the sidewalk improvements that the neighborhood has been wanting, using the CDBG CV funds, then we'll construct both improvements with regular CDBG over the next three years, would be the best bet, so. Lots of improvements going on there, we've also done a lot of housing rehabilitation projects as well in that area, so a lot of improvements going on.
But that park itself is going to be phased?
Probably just two, the estimate we got was about 1.1 million, which was a little bit more than we anticipated, because once we go into a park, we like to, to pick everything that's as low maintenance as possible, so when we leave that area, and there's no more federal funds, that it can continue on in the best way possible, so things like the, playground surfacing, you know, doing all of the things that are the higher end, so they last a little bit longer with our funds.
Well, there's no guarantee there's going to be any money forward.
Mm-hmm, yep, so, things, things that they liked were the obstacle park that we haven't done here before, a trail around the whole area, upgrading the, the surfacing, and a lot of other great things, Councilmember O'Kane was there as well, so.
They give me stickers.
Yep, we did, good.
Projects 879-018 West Seventh Street Corridor Improvements, page 140.
I'd probably talk about all of these together, if that's okay, the last several facade programs, the three Peters Park, Floyd, or Leeds and Riverside are all out of the Planning Division, West Seventh Street is under Neighborhood Services, all have all of their funds allocated, it looks like they have a large cash balance right now, but that's all been allocated out to businesses and property owners, like we're seeing with pretty much every project we have right now, when it comes to construction, material delays are pretty significant compared to where they were about a year ago, and so what we're hearing from the property owners, they're move, they want to move forward, they're waiting on contractors, they're waiting on materials, and now obviously, we're waiting on weather, so I would assume in all four areas, this spring, early summer, you're going to see a lot of activity as those work to get done.
I would like to see in the area beyond Hamilton Boulevard, and I know I've brought that point up a few times, I think that there's a lot of businesses on the other side of Hamilton that would like to be included in it, and they are really the ones that we need, that need the facelift, or that need, you know, a little work done.
Even if you went to what, that four-way stop, don't you think?
Oh, absolutely, the Popousaria, the Wolves, Taco Aguero, yep, absolutely, there's a lot of those.
But I just think that could be a natural stopping point, if you at least go to that four-way.
Manha Blanca could paint, paint the building, you know, I mean, there's, there's a, a lot of possibility there.
Well, by the same token, you should include Wesley Way and go at least Center Street. Ben Fish, and the barber shop over there.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, Ben Fish is 100-plus years in business.
Oh, I know, okay, I know what you're talking about now.
You could wrap it into the West Seventh, or you could extend Wesley Way and extend, extend West Seventh.
We have done several buildings in the West Seventh Corridor that we have delineated right now, and we actually did add that chunk down to, kind of by Perry Street before too, so we have expanded it before, what I can do is come up with a list of all the other properties maybe that haven't participated in West Seventh yet, and see likelihood if I've talked to them before and they are not interested, I can kind of get an idea of how many we have left, and then come up with a map that expands it, and you guys, maybe for wrap-up and see what you all think, that'd be great.
That would be nice to have that little pocket area, I mean, it can get larger, obviously, but to start-
Find me what the percentages are, the split between the 25/75?
Yep, exactly, yeah.
And do I remember correctly, not to call out a single business, but the Four Seasons, that restaurant, West Seventh, they're not, are they?
Their tenant really wants to participate, but whenever it's a rental property, the owner obviously has to, to agree, because they're having, they're getting the mortgage, you know, recorded against their property, so I could see why, you know, it's a big decision for some to make, but it's a five-year forgivable loan, so.
How long have we had the facade programs?
Um, for West Seventh, I'm trying to think, we had our first public meeting in 2013, so it started, I believe the first year was 2014, and then the other two, or the other three just started, gosh, a couple of years ago, I believe, so yeah, West Seventh is probably, as we have it right now, is nearing its end, so to expand it wouldn't be a bad thing right now, I don't think, most people have participated probably that are going to.
And that's expanded interest, I spoke with Peggy Law about wanting to have Parry down there, highlight the space, there's a DAS, DAS thing that's coming up soon, I mean, that we're seeing the space utilized, so it's, it's really nice to have that.
Not to add one more thing, but just one more plug, the Gilcrest Foundation gave the city of Sioux City $40,000 to do another mural down there this summer, that specifically celebrates African-American community and the history of music on that corridor, so that'll be something happening this summer, so it's pretty exciting too.
By the way, that design-
That DAS theme.
A Design Institute still sends me emails if you ever want to try to send them.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
What bill, did you partner with it?
Um, we have one in mind, but the owner has not given me the okay yet, so hoping, I don't think they're opposed, they're just busy, so hoping I'll get that soon.
Thank you.
Next apartment, Water and Underground Utilities, Brad Pitt.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you guys, we have a lot of great projects going on, we appreciate the council's support, so.
Thanks, Marty. First project, 519-103 Well Replacement Program, page 396.
Howdy.
What's up, man?
Happy to be here.
Not as happy as we are. We'll be happy.
Don't have enough happiness.
Project 519-123 Unplanned Water Main Replacement, page 398. Project 519-127 Emergency Water Main Replacement, page 400.
Nobody doesn't say anything.
Yeah, exactly.
I understand, but did you break up, the, the, the West Third Street was one big contract, but were you paying it out of different funds, is that the deal?
That did take a while. I remember what you were doing on that one.
Gordon Fair, City Engineer, yes, we are taking that out of a couple of counts because the whole intersection collapsed due to the sewer problem, the sanitary, so while we're in there fixing that, we're going to fix the water main and the storm in that vicinity, along with some pavement.
Project 519-132 Booster Station Improvements, page 402.
That was just an add-back from some funds that we stole a few years back.
Project 519-164 Annual Water System Improvements, page 410.
We've been working out in Macomb before.
I'm sorry?
Have we worked out in Macomb before, haven't we, down in that area?
Yes, we had, it was back in 17, before I got here, a 16-inch water main below.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
DA Davis did that job on the hill.
Yep.
So what's this, an extension of that?
Yeah, it's, yes, on the other ends.
519-214 Water Facility Structural Preservation, page 414.
As, as a note, we're having, the state elevator guy showed up actually yesterday, telling us that he was going to shut the elevator off, we convinced him otherwise, we're having issues getting bids from any of the elevator companies to come and make the needed updates to it, to keep it in service, so.
Who's your elevator guy?
Well, we've worked with both Kone and Schumacher, and we were unable to get bids from either one of them. I, I don't know, we've been pressing them for a year, we discussed this at last year's CIP, and we can't get anywhere with either of them, so, the state elevator inspector said he'd make a phone call for us to see if he can push this along.
Is that busy, do you think?
I don't, I don't think so, but I'm-
Work, I would guess.
Project 519-
Small, or I mean, what?
A decent-sized project, I mean, there's a lot of upgrades that need, it hasn't been touched since it was built in '70.
Do we ever call them and ask them what?
I'm sorry?
Do we ever just call and say what's going on?
Yeah, we've been, we've been-
I know the Schumacher guy, you want me to call him?
Absolutely, please.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I can sense Brad's frustration, but yeah, it's probably not due to a lack of effort, for sure.
No, and I didn't mean to imply that, I'm just like, well, what did he say?
I know, I know.
Project 519-254 Annual Hydrant Rehabilitation, page 422.
It's back going again, so the contractor's been doing a good job, they've actually gotten more done than what they anticipated, so just let them keep moving forward.
Don't jinx.
Don't jinx, that's right.
Okay, great. Is he picking up his chips that he blows off that are-
I don't know, I haven't heard any complaints, I haven't heard any complaints.
Project 519-254 Water Facility Chemical Improvements, page 424. Project 519-262 Water Facility SCADA Updates, page 427.
Okay, no, I asked us to stay in this-
No, they're- No, this, this doesn't happen unless, uh, this doesn't happen until the fiber gets on the riverfront.
Well, they're going to do that, it's in one of these pages, isn't it?
It's supposed, it's supposed to be done. So we did all the SCADA for the, for the Zenith plant, that's the upgrade that we talked about the other day.
Yeah.
So this is for all of the outlying facilities. As they get fiber to them, we will upgrade the SCADA cards at those locations.
Somewhere, I don't know where, I don't, we haven't, I thought it was under WCIC, but it's not. Is there another WCIC page?
In Public Works.
Public Works, yeah.
In Public Works, because they're doing some, they're doing some in this year's budget to like, one of the well sites out in Riverside.
Yeah, and that's another one that'll, when the fiber gets there, we'll do the upgrades.
Project 519-263, annual undersized water main replacement, page 429.
If the 23 projects, none of them have been done, correct? Hardly?
Uh, the plant is on the books.
Is it bid?
It's going out to bid.
Going on-
That's what I said, it hasn't even been bid.
Right.
No. It's in, uh, I think we've awarded it, or we're going to award it to RP Constructors.
It has been bid?
Yes, we have bid it out. I just can't remember if we've awarded it or not.
He's down in Georgia building the water plant, how's he going to do that? I hope he left a crew here.
Here yesterday.
Project 519-264, pourbacks, page 432.
If council would like an updated report on the pourbacks, we will get that for you.
We'll provide that wrap-up. Project 519-266, water plant, high-service pump, BFD rehabilitation, 434.
Boy, they're going to stop making those so long. Just rebuild them, have Malloy rebuild them, or do you buy new?
We're going to buy new.
We're going to find, to make sure that there's only one supplier, so when you have to buy parts, it's real, they're real expensive, I hope, I hope you would, or universal, that, that a normal business would do. How are you going to do that?
Well, I mean, we'll, we always give bids for them, so.
I know. That's what worries me.
I know.
Some days, somebody around here is going to figure out, to determine what long-term costs of pumps are, because cheapest part of the pump is when you buy it the first time. The most expensive part of the pump is when you only got one supplier that'll do any work on that pump, and the sewer plant is full of that stuff. I wish we could learn that we should look at life cycle costs and that kind of stuff, and determine what is the best deal on the front side. But we won't, so.
I wonder what the percentage is on the front side?
We've been very fortunate, though. Uh, you know, Black and Beach does a very good job of determining life cycle costs, and determining what the best manufacturer to go with is, and that's, that's just one example, but as far as Southbridge goes, they've, they've done a very good job of that.
So they'll make the recommendation for you?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the people at the sewer plant aren't that good, so.
So it's probably going to cost us a little bit more on the front side, because we're going to go for the quality and longevity of-
Right.
-pumps? Good.
Project 519-268, outer drive pressure and storage, page 436.
What? I know you're going to get a booster to, to get the water from Correctionville up, I'm guessing, right, to outer drive? How are you coming? How are you doing this?
Yep, this, the booster station will actually be on outer drive-
Right.
-and boost up to a tower along the bypass corridor on the south side.
On the south side of what?
On the south side of outer drive.
No, somewhere by Bertrand's place.
Yes, it'll sit north of that, away.
But are you running the water line from Correctionville, so you got a big loop? Is that how you're doing it?
We've determined at this point, no.
You're coming up from the, you're coming up from the other tower on Floyd.
Right.
Pumping up.
Yep.
You got to run a whole new lot water line, because I bet we didn't build the water line big enough, did we?
No, the water line is adequate size, and it's right to the corner of Outer Drive and 27th Street, 28th, sorry.
Right, and so you're going to, oh, 28th, oh, well, because you just did it with the jail.
Right, at least.
So you're going to tie on there.
Yep.
And then what are you going to build, a, a tank or a tower?
Tower.
You're going to build a water tower?
Yep.
And, and that's going to be 11 million bucks?
Yep, for the booster, the tower, and the water main.
And we're going to do that before we really have any projects?
That's difficult to do.
Yeah.
It's, it's very difficult to put the, uh, the storage in an area where you do not have development already established.
Because it's, you gotta, you gotta-
Keep going.
Water's got to cycle.
And we have water quality issues in other areas already.
Yeah, so why are we doing this next year?
The, the money's just there. The intended use plan just got approved. The money can move anywhere. It's just, that's where we put it for now.
We swapped out a member of the American Rescue Funds.
Okay, I, I understand what you're doing, I don't have a problem with that, but what I'm, you don't build a water tower unless you're going to use it, I'm not sure.
It's a timing issue.
Yep. So I think it's just a placemaker for now, and then we'll move it.
The only way that that makes sense is if you are going to run a water line back to Correctionville Road where you, you can cycle, right? I mean, that's the idea, is to loop, right?
At this, at this point in time, the, with the plan that we have, the water would have to be pushed back into Grandview Pressure.
Do you want-
Without, without having the water main back to Correctionville Road.
Right. So that, because it floats, you'll float that with Grandview, but you've got to get it back to Grandview.
Right.
If Grandview stays full, that never goes backwards. It's only going to go back when it's dry.
Have to be on the backside of the booster station back into Grandview.
So do you want to bring it back for wrap-up and discuss if we should push it out?
I don't know, I'm not, these guys are the water, I know enough to be dangerous, but I know this is not, not a very smart thing to do until you have some development, and you're going to run water in and out of it.
I agree with that.
But we can bring it back for wrap-up and push it back here, if you feel comfortable.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'd like. I mean, I'm glad you got the money, but just because you got money doesn't mean it makes sense.
Yeah.
And what's, just one more question. What's it cost, 4 million to run the water line back to Correctionville Road? Be a big project now with these prices.
Right. I, if I have that cost, I will put it in-
Okay.
-in wrap-up.
Project 519-270, Harbor Drive, Highway 75, main upsize, page 438.
That water line along Highway 75, is this on Highway 75?
This is the one that runs up Harbor Drive across Highway, well, Singing Hills, and then goes up on the west side of the interstate to get us up near Lincoln Way. This is the upsize for the plant to get us up to CapEx.
15, 20 years after we said we were going to do this, we're getting her done. Good job.
Project 539-102, annual sanitary sewer improvements, page 441. Project 539-127, emergency sanitary sewer, page 444. Project 539-217, utility lining improvements, page 446. Page, excuse me, project 539-227, bypass pumping equipment, page 448.
What, what do you use for, if you don't use clay, what do you use for sewer lines?
I prefer to use plastic, something seable. I'm not a, I'm not a clay fan at all.
Oh, you, yeah, you are a plastic guy, yeah, that's right. Okay, good.
Because I like seable pipe, because with our soil type, you don't want to add water to it.
Well, that's really nice that somebody around here likes that, thank you for that.
Project 549-101, unplanned storm sewer, page 450. Project 549-133, annual storm sewer improvements, page 453. Project 549-166, emergency storm sewer, page 458.
There's no, there's no way to build inlets any cheaper. They've gotten so expensive.
Parts, everything is just ridiculous right now.
And I drove Country Club Boulevard the other day, and every manhole is sunk two inches. Is that just-
Manholes aren't sinking, believe it or not, the road's heaved.
Okay, I agree with that.
That manhole is actually way below frostbite.
I agree, okay, but is, is that just going to always, it happens on Transit Avenue, all the roads we have.
If you drive Morningside, where they put rock underneath the road and sub drains, you'll see this old section where they didn't do that, and the new section, look at all my manholes, everything's perfectly level, and that's what I love to see, because that's not putting added stress on my infrastructure underneath the road. When that road heaves, you're putting more pressure on the infrastructure underneath of it.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if there is a way to solve that problem, because newer streets that we've done, like Transit and Country Club Boulevard, they're all do, they're all in the same shape right now because of this cold weather.
You can, I mean, Gordon probably better, after, better than me, but I would say if you wanted to do that, you could drain tile alongside of the road, help catch some of the water from-
Well, yeah, you can, you can do a lot of things, but that, you, you got to be practical, too.
Well, and what you're saying, John, are you saying, like, with that added subbase or the gravel is what-
That added subbase is what's making the road not settle. I mean, that's what's making the road, it's going to give you a lot longer life out of the road, and it's going to help my infrastructure, because you're not putting added pressure underneath.
Which is the whole fight we went through with that new development.
Yes.
Able to have the subbase.
That subbase and the drainage is what makes roads last a lot longer, and my infrastructure lasts longer.
Well, that was a big headache of a discussion, so I'm glad that it's at least being something good.
Can that tile be added, like, non-disturbing?
You would have to go in behind the curb line and add it behind the curb line. I know a lot of other towns do it on their overlay streets. They just make a requirement where they have to pay, but you have to do driveways along with that, but I mean, it adds a lot of moisture from getting underneath the road, so it helps prolong the life.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, the interstate does a lot of that now, don't they, on the side? They're tiling that stuff, aren't they?
That actually, drain tile usually will drain up to 10 to, well, 15 to 20 foot away from the drain tile, will suck the water away, so.
You're welcome.
Next apartment, Public Works, Dave Tarney. First project is Project 138-002, annual streetlight repair and maintenance, page 252.
Where's your question now? Who was asking? Who was asked the question? Oh, this is, stop, is this streetlights?
1700.
Okay.
City-owned streetlights.
I know, I, two, I mean, you were asking the question earlier, ask your question. You were asking if it made sense if we owned them.
Maintain them.
And maintain them.
As opposed to Mid-American?
Or is our price-
We'd have to take a hard look at that.
Is our price any better, any worse?
Yeah, we, we pay, so we, we have a mixed bag throughout Sioux City. We own some, Mid-American owns some, yeah, we pay a lower rate on the ones we own versus the ones they own. But, I mean, I'll be honest with you, Mid-American is told, they'd be more than happy to give them to us. So that kind of tells you-
Right.
They don't want to add it ongoing.
That they're problematic, and they don't want to meet-
Yeah.
They can't, they can't give them to you, so whether they want to or not, they've got a rate filing that-
So, I mean, I, 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 that would take a long looking to see if we would want to-
Is Hamilton Boulevard ours or not? They're on 36. We got a light out, I've been complaining about it now.
I believe, I believe that's theirs. I, Kurt-
They were working on it when they had the problem across the street. I saw their two guys.
Yeah, Kurt, Kurt, Kurt would, he has a map that shows there, because there's no rhyme or reason, I can't off the top of my head know which one's ours.
They don't, they still haven't fixed it.
Yeah.
So, a block of them could be theirs, and that strip of them could be ours, oh, no.
Most of the newer developments-
Anything new is ours.
Is ours. We took ownership years ago of them, years ago.
But they don't want to be in the light, they don't want to be in the streetlight business.
They're not, really, because if you don't complain, they never, in the old days, they'd have a guy that drove, or a service guy that would drive the neighborhoods at night and fix them as-
So we mark them, our guy, our 1,000-man will mark them, that's, we'll see, he'll tie ribbons on them, and then, I think he ties an orange ribbon, I believe, and then if it comes back and there's a blue ribbon, that means they've checked it, but it's an underground issue, so like, this time of year, they're not going to fix an underground issue, but.
Well, in the old days, if it was an underground issue, they had a crew that'd fix it. Now they don't have an underground crew, so forget that.
Did they work under the squeaky wheel?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'd get our residents to start emailing them.
I, I think you have, uh-
I have Sam's email and text phone.
Yep.
Yes. And he's not really the guy, but I forced him to be our-
I, I think that, that's probably been the best thing for us.
Right.
But 150,000 is what is allocated?
For repair.
That's just for, repairs for ours.
For the ones that we own.
Well, that's not even 10 bucks, 12 bucks a light. Think about it. Well, if you had to do them all, but, we don't do them all, do we? Okay, but an electrician, an electrician, a lineman makes 130 grand a year for them, so figure it out.
A lot of times, we, I mean, we can do some, now that we have an electrician, he'll make some of the repairs, but if it gets into they got to take the pole down and all that, we don't have that equipment.
Yeah, you, you got Nystrom and people like that.
Yeah, we hire Nystrom or, or Thompson, and they'll do a lot of the repairs for us if we can't handle them, but we have an electrician that allows us to make a lot more repairs than we used to, so we do save a lot of money doing that.
You have that electrician about a year?
About two years ago. We replaced a signal electrician with an actual electrician, which, so he does both, so that's worked out well for us, plus it's allowed us-
He hasn't done very well on that one on 10th and Douglas, it was out again last night.
Well, that's the-
He can call one out no matter what.
Well, no, he's talking, he's talking about the streetlight, or the signal light.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, well, some of the older ones are-
Problematic.
Problematic.
So we have 1700 city-owned lights.
It's, we're, it's, it's on our study list for this year, for removal.
We have 1700 city-owned light posts.
I believe so.
And we have 150,000 dollars to maintain them.
Yes, annually.
I think 90 dollars an hour, 95 for an electrician, that's a cheap space when you consider the truck.
About how many lights did we repair last year, and what was the average cost of repair?
I would have to-
I'd love to see that, and I-
Do you want them to bring back?
That's 88 dollars a light post.
I'm sure Kurt can look that up, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see how many lights were repaired, because not all of them have been, some are still out.
Oh, yeah, but you've got poles that get knocked over, those poles are probably four, three to four thousand feet.
Well, this is not a, a light pole, but that traffic signal, Glennon 35, that- Yeah. I mean, I think what we're billing that car insurance company is probably around 100,000 dollars by the time it's all said and done.
How about that light post on Floyd by Walmart? Somebody hit it, and it's like leaning like this.
Have a look, I haven't, Kurt hasn't talked about that.
On the North Interest, like, next to the Credit Union there, or-
Off past, no.
Well, that's our, that's, that's a-
Mid-American?
That's, that's a bank light. The one where you come out of the gas station?
No, it's on, it's, yes, but it's on the right-of-way, I think it's a city, I don't know if it's a city one, or if it's a Mid-American.
Oh, you're just, oh.
It's a big, one of the Cobra.
Cobra heads.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, Floyd, I think, don't take my word on it.
I'm not, but it's been like that a long time.
I bet it's ours up there.
Leaning over.
No, because I think Mid-American goes right through Leeds and everything, on Floyd.
Yeah, but I wondered when we did all that development, if we didn't take some of those, because there was no lights on.
That could be, too.
Kind of a nasty one, so.
Where there's a block that, yeah, I'll have Kurt look into it.
Okay, not to be-
Yep.
-thinking and choosing, but-
David, it seems like it's been a lot of time, though, trying to decide if it's city-owned or Mid-American-owned.
Well, we have a map that tells us.
So you can look it up pretty quick.
Yeah, Kurt can look it up. Kurt, I don't have it on my, Kurt-
Is he responsive?
Yeah, yeah.
Dan's going to start emailing him.
No, I just, I, you look at the 1700, 150,000, I get it, if you divide it in, 1700 into that, but then, it's not all 1700 lights, so just-
But 100 lights.
Maybe just a number of lights.
100 lights at 150 bucks, which would be cheap.
But you, you, you take three knockdowns, and that's going to eat up, uh, more than half that money. But you, you, you take three knockdowns, and that's gonna eat up, uh, more than half that money.
Well, depends on who knocks them down.
Yeah.
I could go knock it down, wouldn't you come after me to pay for it?
Well, you do, but it still shows in our budget. It gets reimbursed back into the fund, but it still comes out of our budget.
Oh, the reimbursements are shown here?
They'll go back into that fund, yes.
They go, yeah.
Unfortunately, there are times that we don't actually recoup a hundred percent of the costs.
Or we don't recoup anything.
Or they drive away.
Well, and even then, sometimes we don't get a full hit and run or a semi replacement, because they don't have enough insurance, so then we'd have to go and sue them for the additional amount of money.
I would say most of our just streetlights, Dan, are hit and runs, we never find, we never get the driver.
All right, semi cut in the corners.
Yep.
Camera at every streetlight.
Thanks, Dave.
Project one three nine zero zero six.
About that.
Annual sign signal pavement marking, page two fifty-four.
But we oughta have more cameras in this town. We've got fibered every one of those, like, streetlight poles.
Close, yep.
Close.
Right.
And we oughta have cameras just for the protection of our neighborhood.
Right, look at how it helped with these situations they're in right now with that beating. And that was a city camera, their city's camera that got the best view of it.
I would be a big proponent of putting them on str, streetlights or stoplights around town, because.
Safety.
Anything you can do to.
It's a lot of data, though. It's a lot of data to store.
I get it, but you don't.
Depending on how long you hold the cycle, yeah.
You don't have to keep it.
You can purge it after nine.
Thirty days would be plenty on that.
Don't get the cloud.
Something happens to a hit and run, you, it'd pay for it.
Uh, the striping project, any question? Uh, sign striping.
You know what we brought up a little while ago, your absence, was your dislike of the medians? The raised, that we said, you know what, you are in favor of not having them.
Where'd you go to college?
Wright.
Oh, I was gonna say, you couldn't have gone to Iowa State.
Fine graduate college.
Okay.
Project one three nine zero zero seven, annual intersection and traffic signal improvements, page two fifty-six. Project one three nine zero zero nine, city traffic control system, page two fifty-eight.
I'm sorry, can I just go back?
Yep, you shook him.
I wanted to ask about next year, down the line, and, and I'm sure this is probably subject to change, but the Floyd fourth intersection, we've got three hundred and fifty. Number one, do you think that's adequate? Number two, are there any? I know there's not a lot of wiggle room. That intersection's not gonna change.
No.
Um, but are, are we looking to see as, as plans get developed for the viaduct, that changing? The intersection, any improvements that we make to it, whether it be the light or whether, like, one projection said that that could be cut off, right, if Floyd were to be cut off? What would that look like?
No, Floyd's not gonna get cut off. It's whether we connect, whether we connect Floyd to Gordon. But again, because of the viaduct, the existing viaduct, that intersection won't change. I mean, it's really basically coming at two existing viaducts. So, unless we're gonna purchase some buildings, that, that intersection's pretty much stuck to what it is.
Buy a railroad out.
Yeah. So.
Like fifteen million.
I was gonna say, where would we?
One second, because Matthew's talking about the intersection improvement, right? So, I forgot, I, I need to watch my notes better. I had a question about this one. For some of these, I don't think it makes sense at all of them, but, um, I was thinking about it when we're talking about signals and walking symbols and all those things. Again, I've been to other communities, thinking about accessibility and what they're trying to do with some of those. Have we thought about introducing auditory?
We have not.
Things at all, or would look at that, or what, what is the threshold? Why do some communities do that, others don't? I've seen it more like where there's a lot of pedestrian. So, I mean, for those of you that don't know, you hit a button that says walk, walk, you know, or, you know, walk this side.
Yeah, we just, we have just, we've just never really gone after it, um, uh, so, no, I, I, we can, we can look into it, but.
Because, and I don't know what cities in Iowa necessarily, I'm trying to think of if Des Moines, if I have or not. Kansas City's the one that jumps out to me, I remember all of those in the downtowns, but, and then obviously like DC and some of those. Well, and I just don't, yeah, I agree, and I just don't know what the threshold is, or when we would want to, or what that added expense is, or, you know what I mean? So, I was just trying to think, like, as we move forward, when is that, but.
Yeah, there's, I, I, I don't know of any requirement.
If you're gonna do it, you oughta do it on the one on Outer Drive and, and Floyd.
And that was the one that I was kind of thinking.
Especially when you've got bike trails on. What, what is that two thirty-four? I, I thought, those lights aren't that old. What are you doing?
No, that's that reconfiguration of the area around there to get the sidewalks all to work and.
The sidewalks and, uh, push buttons and.
Yeah, the.
But it's not replacing the mass.
No.
Wow.
No, it's all add-on to what's there.
But that's, you're bidding that in one project this year.
Yeah.
I guess they, my direction, or if I could ask, of what I would say as far as the auditory ones, if you have a group in Iowa that you.
I can put it out to.
Ask, just see what other communities are doing. Are they implementing that? Are, have they been asked? Are there any other cities in Iowa? I'm not saying we have to be the first, I'm not telling you that I think we should make all of them that way, I just wondered.
Well, it would be on a replacement.
Oh, I agree.
But now's the time to look into it before you do this project.
Want us to add it to wrap-up for a memo?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be curious to whatever.
Yeah, I might not have it by wrap-up, but I could get you information, because I'll put it out to the Public Works group and what other cities come.
But they can give you some idea of the cost.
Yeah, I get, oh, I get the cost, but I was gonna see what other cities are doing.
Yeah, if you could do both, that would be great. And just let us know what you hear, even if that's nothing.
Project one three nine zero zero nine, city traffic control systems, page two fifty-eight.
And the fiber's already bad there?
I know we have some fiber issues, that's why I think there, there, we have a fiber project that's going out on Morningside. But this is to redo the timings, and this is actually a joint project with, um, Simco. Simco's will provide, I think, the first two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, we might not use this whole amount, obviously, but we're, they're just going out to RFP now, so we don't know the exact.
But I'm saying, this says fiber replacement, how far is that fiber getting replaced?
Um, I don't know how much of that's been replaced. I know, I think all past Graceland's been replaced. Past Graceland. Place is my understanding. I'll have to double check with, with, uh, uh, in our office, Kevin Livesey, who's been overseeing that.
Well, this would be a classic, because that Metro Link just ran this route, tore everything up. They're not very responsive, by the way. But they've done, they've gone there, that's what I don't understand, why we would put a whole bunch of fiber in and we use a thousandth of what it's capable of? If we could rent a pair, because you're not, you're only using a couple pairs.
Correct.
It doesn't make any sense to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put fiber in.
Well, we could use some of Metronets.
Yeah.
We could just.
I think, I, well, I think what's already been done, that's the, because it was last year they were working on that project. Yeah, yes. So, I'll, I'll see how much of it was replaced and. And we can, we can definitely look into a.
I don't, I just don't wanna, we, we're spending money on fiber that we don't use any of it, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Project one three nine zero one nine, traffic studies and investigation, page two sixty. Project one seven three zero one one, flood risk reduction and infrastructure, page two sixty-four.
What exactly are you doing here?
This is levy repair, this is mostly, uh, would be under Kelly Box, doing, you know, projects, just levy repairs and floodgate replacements that need to be done.
Is that out in Riverside?
I think, uh, I'm not sure if it's Riverside or Floyd.
It's all the levies. I think it's all the levies.
It's all what?
It's all, for all the levies. I don't think it's just for one.
Yeah, I don't think he's got it allocated for which level.
Yeah.
What's a floodgate cost?
I'll have to check with Kelly.
Well, yeah, I don't know how many they're doing, but that seems awfully cheap for, for like, some of those that you got out in Leeds and that.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're just doing one. Could it be one floodgate for forty thousand?
It could be.
Very expensive.
Ooh. Riverfront? I think we discussed it at peer review, though.
Would there be one on the riverfront?
The one on Riverfront?
I think so, I don't think, because we don't.
Or is it the Floyd? Is it the Floyd channel?
You got a couple out on Floyd, you got them right up there, where the trail and that.
Yeah, along the Floyd, we have, we have lots of them.
That's the one, yeah. You're right, right before it gets to the river. Yep.
One seven three zero one nine, Outer Drive Floyd, Floyd River Drainage, page two sixty-six.
Still held up with property, isn't it?
Still trying to negotiate with, um, with property owner, yeah, Dolph Eibner.
This is north of Outer Drive.
Yes, this is to build a basin to get mo, most of the people in Leeds out of the flood insurance. Won't get them all, but it'll get most of them.
That would be really.
They get the property bought.
Oh, is that by the terminal, the fuel terminal, you're trying to buy that ground?
Um, kind of southwest of there, yeah.
It's a hay, it's just a farm field.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's all part of that farm.
Yeah.
Off of Floyd Bull, off of, yeah, off of Forty-first Street.
Yeah, yes.
Friend Dolph's not, isn't that their ground?
Yeah.
Project five three nine zero zero three, reconstruction of Bacon Creek Channel, page two sixty-eight. Project five four nine zero zero two, South Bridge Drainage Ditch, page two seventy.
This is another three million on top of the four million?
Yes.
But yet we can't condemn ground, farm ground for a ditch.
Get all the way to the river, correct. So, I think they're now trying to find a, a partial solution to make it into a detention, a retention basin in the meantime, and then, as we.
So, it can be expanded as when we can, had acquired property.
But it's gonna limit what we can do out on the Twenty-Seven Flags.
It's absolutely amazing to me, a carbon pipeline that can kill people within seconds. It appears that we're gonna get that under condemnation, but a city that needs to drain its city, that the DNR requires. Now, you wanna talk about an injustice in the state legislature, that is the classic for me. And somebody needs to write a letter to the state senator, I'll be glad to sign it, but that's, that makes no sense whatsoever.
With the choir.
If, if Magellan wanted to put a new gas line in our community, guess what? We gotta accept that.
Retention, retention pond?
Well, no, so, the idea would be is you'd have a, eventually a channel, and then every, every individual property would have to do their own detention. What we're saying is build as far as a ditch as we can, and let it be retained in there in the meantime. We'd still make everyone put their own detention in, because eventually that retention's gonna go away. And you don't wanna, you don't wanna have to scurry and then replace that stormwater management afterwards, so, yeah. But it's gonna, it's gonna limit what we can do in Twenty-Seven Flags.
Offhand, would, wouldn't that be, do you have enough land area for the retention? Wouldn't that have to be a pretty large?
Fortunately, it takes a lot of development ground.
That's the problem. And, and what we're saying is, we'd only build it large enough.
Right.
We're gonna build it so it's like the, like the ditch, which is gonna, gonna limit how much hard surface you can create in that area until that ditch goes all the way through.
But the county does ditches all the time, they have drainage districts.
Districts, yep.
And they must condemn for those.
Yep, I think if, that's a legal question I can't answer on it.
Well, somebody should ask that question, because the county's allowed to do.
Why can't the county just create a drainage district and then let the district do the condemnation?
Yeah.
That might be a good question.
One that should be asked before we go spend a lot of money on a retention pond.
Yep.
Possibility?
Well, hopefully, this, this ditch that we are gonna put in, that's gonna be a retention, will, it won't be as, it's just using the cost that it would take anyway to put that ditch in. So, it's not, it's not gonna be lost money.
We would have to do it anyway?
Well, we're still gonna have, you're still gonna put the ditch in. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna build the ditch as far as we can and use that as retention, but that's why it's also gonna be limiting until you can expand it.
And then as we get more property, it's just gonna continue.
But if we never get any more property, what's happening?
Then you're, then you're kind of stuck. You can't, you won't be, you'll get to a point where you can't build anymore, because you're.
It only holds so much.
Yeah, because you're in a hole.
But we're building out what we can on our property to the specs that we originally were looking at, and just.
That's the idea, and that.
One day we'll be able to continue it on.
And that was with the assumption that we were gonna acquire some of this property that was voluntarily, you know, that people were willing to sell to us, but I don't know, you know, we'd have to talk to Marty about where he's gotten with those property owners.
No, you don't have to, they've gotten nowhere.
Project five three nine zero zero three, reconstruction of Bacon Creek Channel. No, we did that one, sorry.
Yeah, this is a conduit.
Seven one nine zero zero one, annual CBD infrastructure improvements, page two seventy-eight.
Two.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Somewhere I saw an area way for Commerce Building. Might be a different page, probably is.
No, it's there at the bottom.
Huh?
It's there at the bottom, it says Commerce slash Motor Mart.
Where are you seeing that?
On the two seventy-eight on the bottom.
Two seventy-eight.
Anticipated expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've just expressed interest to me, at that, that's all, they were going to look into it, and they haven't gone back to me at this point.
Well, why in the world would they not have done that when they were building the project?
They looked into it, they asked, they asked me about it, I told them about the program. They just said, no, we're not going to do it. They've since changed their mind.
Because what would he, what would they maybe wanna do?
Fill the area way in. This is money that we give them.
Their basement extends out underneath the sidewalk, so it's filling that area underneath. We try to get rid of those when we can.
Gotcha.
Different things you run into, though, don't you?
Yep, and some, some owners don't wanna get rid of them. You know, the orphan doesn't wanna get rid of theirs, you know.
And, uh, you know, the Martin Building, they can't.
Security National have that?
Structural.
Yeah.
So, I mean, some of them wanna keep them and, yeah, so we, we just offer assistance if they wanna get rid of them.
Should mean your sidewalk thaw faster.
Mm-hmm.
They really used to thaw, because that's where the, the reason they built those was the steam lines ran under there in the sidewalk, never had the scoop, because the steam line cooked the, cooked the sidewalk.
That makes sense, yeah.
Seven one nine zero one five, reconstruction undermined pavement and drainage, page two eighty, two, two eighty, excuse me.
I don't know who we hired originally to do Whispering Creek Drive, but.
Oh, who built it originally?
You know?
Yeah.
Who did?
But it wasn't, it was like, it was done under a private development.
Yeah, right. We did it as a golf course, but I remember, we just bit it out.
There's lots of stories about it being, the ground was frozen and all that, there's a lot of, I've heard it all.
Write a book, could.
I don't know if I knew that much, but yeah.
Seven one nine zero one seven, reconstructing asphalt streets, page two eighty-two. And one through twelve were the asphalt streets?
Yes, yeah. These are the, these are the ones, uh, every time they're, it comes to the, realizing that they have to, that they'll be assessed for it, the project dies.
Dies?
The project dies every time the, the residents find out they're gonna be assessed.
If you wanna find out, have a paving assessment on Chicago Avenue, did it twice in my tour of duty here. And you'll find that they're, they never drive on it, so then you say, well, we're gonna close the street.
Because it...
That's what you run into.
Oh, for the assessment.
Streets in the program have previously not been built to full depth standards?
Yes.
Which one?
Thin asphalt, I'm just looking at numbers 1 through 12.
Yep.
Streets that need to be redone.
Chicago's a dirt, well, it's an, it should be a dirt street, that's the one that's got about two inches of asphalt that's full of potholes.
Yep, that's...
And then you move down two streets and it's dirt above the old school there by Miles Inn.
So the only way this will get done...
We send a road grader out a few times a year to two blocks, that's how smart we are around here.
So the only way these will get redone is if there's an assessment to the property owners?
Oh, you can pay for it.
Oh, yeah.
Or we pay for it, or. Now, when we send out, you know, for our, our bids and we're doing asphalt and concrete comparable, so if you need eight inches of concrete, is the bid for the asphalt eight inches?
Usually nine.
It's nine?
But the concrete, six?
No.
Eight?
Uh, we're doing seven on residential's and eight on our, uh...
Seven and nine, but you're also doing a different sub base, or not?
Nope, same sub base.
Same sub base, finally?
So that, so...
Well, we do the sub base with the drain.
Even though they're different materials, they're basically the same depth?
I'm sorry, what?
Even though they're different materials, they're basically the same depth?
They're just a little bit of... An inch different, yeah.
The asphalt is an inch thicker?
Yes.
Than the concrete?
And, and I, I'll tell ya, so we have both the Concrete Paving Association and the Asphalt Paving Association both say we're wrong, so I, I kinda think that...
You do, you do.
So I kinda think we, we have a good mix because they both say, "No, theirs should be thicker, no, theirs should be thicker." So I, I think we gotta be fairly close because they both think it's unfair to them.
The Concrete Association was asking me about it, damn it, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah.
I'm like, "I don't know, I'll find out."
That's why they don't call on me because I'm the one that wants to...
You want the asphalt?
No, I don't care whether it's asphalt, I just wanna bid it.
I am surprised that the asphalt needs to be as thick, for some reason I thought it needed to be thinner.
Mm-mm.
Oh, no, asphalt has to always be thicker.
It's flexible.
Thicker, right.
So, concrete's a rigid pavement, asphalt's a flexible pavement.
Right, right.
And I, so asphalt's argument partially is, is that by putting the sub base under both, and they're right, it's not giving concrete as much of a support as... It doesn't benefit the concrete as much as it does the asphalt, but we do the, we're doing the aggregate base so we get a drainable base.
But it's the Concrete Association that said that the asphalt was too thick.
No.
Yes, they did.
No way.
No.
Why wouldn't it be?
No, they told me, no, they think it should be thicker.
No, guarantee you they didn't say it.
Yeah.
I gotta circle back on that guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, circle back because you miss...
Who are you talking to?
They would tell you it has to be, they'd tell you it has to be 12 inches.
Yeah.
I thought you were gonna tell the four of us how lucky we are that we haven't had...
You're never, you're never gonna do a sidewalk, the nice thing about the job now is you don't do paving and sidewalks, you guys don't have the courage to even do one, so we're just...
Do any of these 1 through 12?
I thought you said we had the courage we did.
I know, to assess them.
We, we had the courage. Something else, I don't remember what.
The hard part about assessing some of these is you only, you can only assess them up to 25% of the value of their home, some of the...
Yeah.
You would, we would max out and still have to pay.
But you always do that, but you get rid of the long-term maintenance.
So should we be trying to fund it instead of assessing them?
I'm just saying, no, I mean, I paid for mine, why can't everybody else? I had a big assessment, you can only imagine how, mine was 23,000 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Even with a low-valued house.
At 25%, to your point, Dave, up on the north side, when we were looking at a sidewalk there, the, was it Silvian?
Mm-hmm.
Out for some of the, well, because they had so much...
Right, well, the one, yeah, the, yeah, the one gentleman, I think we had, what, like 30 or 35,000 dollars worth of sidewalk?
Yes.
It was only 25, but yeah, it was, it was a high number because he had a huge lot, that's a lot of sidewalk to put in.
You're saying we'd have to be careful about the city funding because historically we've all...
We haven't done it, right.
Well, it, it increases the value of their property.
Dramatically.
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
And I'd argue it's public safety, um, if there's, personally.
For sidewalks or for streets?
For sidewalks.
Well, I would agree, I, I'm not, I would do, I'd do a public hearing on sidewalks once a year if it were me, but nobody else...
It is you.
No, Matthew, you're saying the city...
I would do it.
Well, you haven't done one yet, so don't be so confident.
I would jump on the bandwagon though, I'd attempt it.
Well, drive around this town and see where there's a lot, I mean, you go around Sioux City and somebody didn't build a house and there's three blocks of sidewalk with one
Gap.
pop not done.
That quarterly?
Huh?
I'd be open to doing it quarterly.
You only have to do it annually.
I would first sign up and do it annually.
And the school district used to have the courage to give us the list. They don't have the courage anymore to do that, probably because too many kids ride a bus. Back 20, by 30 years ago, kids still walked. They had neighborhood schools and we did a lot of them in those neighborhoods.
And now the parents give them all a ride.
Huh?
What do they call that, safe walk?
Safe, safe walk to school route.
Mm-hmm, and they still have those.
Right, but we used to pave them, we used to put sidewalks in, a lot of them all the time. Once a year we'd have a hearing and they'd give us a new list and the people would come in and tell us. Yeah.
We should.
Yeah.
I, I think, I'll just tell you, the last time we did one, when I was here the first time, and we used to always call it the little old lady in the red coat, shows up, "I can't afford it." So you tell her, "No," and then everybody else goes, "Well, why do I gotta put mine if you're not making hers in?"
The best two were two doctors, one that lived up in the heights and one that had a clinic somewhere out on Hamilton, close to where Julie lives. And you don't wanna ask them when they stand there about the costs and say, "Is money a problem?" Because they do get upset, I can tell you that. First hand.
There was a lot of doctors that did live where I live now, that built them.
No, they didn't wanna put a sidewalk, and I understand it, but they didn't wanna put a sidewalk on the north side of their property, I get that, nobody hardly uses it. But back then we didn't have a trail.
Right.
And back then you didn't know what was gonna develop, and so it better to err on requiring them than not doing them.
Agreed.
Okay, that was refreshing.
Okay, Project 719-026, River Cross, Rail Crossing Improvements, Leeds Riverside, page 287.
How are we doing on that, Dave?
You will never have, you won't have enough years to get a quiet zone in this community.
I, I'd have to check with Brittany on the, I, I don't know what the progress is on the ones that are currently open.
These are...
The Riverside one, we're, we need to get, fire some property. Another, or, because we have a private crossing, uh, not a pri- oh, it's a non-conforming, I don't think it's crossing, or something like that.
Where's that at?
Just north of the Dollar General, there's like... Bruner. It's on the, Bruner, on the east side of the river.
You pull road up to the dump.
Could be, huh. And there's a storage unit there, some, a garage. They're renting it out now. And there's...
Oh, no, it's, it's Chris Hansen's old yard, probably.
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
No, Bruner's down, Bruner's down by Riverside Park entrance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the old dump road going up to the old dump, the old Riverside dump.
So, we're, we had fire prop, uh, so we could shut that down. There's a building back there, there's, I mean, just a, like a metal tin building, yeah.
That condemnation works there then, if we...
Uh, we could, yes, on that one, we, we could, yes, because it's not for commerce, it's just for the quiet zone.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't got that far into it.
Yeah.
Now, right.
We probably sold it like dummies.
It's the same property owner, though.
Didn't we look into that?
He's got the, I'll say he, they have the property to the north where we would have to get a driveway to that building that he owns on the south property.
I bet you that's a building we had for the dump and probably sold it, that's how smart we are. Yes, they had a metal building up, wouldn't have been on, in the dump area, yeah.
Project 719-102, South Lewis Boulevard Reconstruction, page 300.
Can we, can we stop at, uh, 292, 18th Street Viaduct?
Oh, yep, Project 719-071, 18th Street Viaduct, Dave would like to discuss.
Which page is that, I'm sorry?
Do we wanna just get rid of this project? Because Cargill's looking...
Julie has a newfound influence.
I, they already know that, or Gordon does.
Yeah.
Cargill's looking to expand their rail operation and if, they're either gonna have to design around it, which I think is, from their point of view, almost impossible, or have to totally redesign it. Are we, I guess I'm just asking, we've been pushing back the design of Hooven every year because we just doesn't fit into our budget. And do we wanna just let this project go? Because I, me, I think we should just, if, if we're never gonna build it, let's...
Well, you can still not do this and still close it.
We can still help Cargill.
Penn Street.
No, no, this is, they wanna expand, they wanna expand their rail yard up across, uh, where, where, where the viaduct would be, and right now their plans would go right into one of the abutments, so...
How much are they willing to participate?
In the...
100% right?
Hmm?
Don't they wanna buy some of that from us that we own, Gordon? Where the rail is that they wanna start utilizing?
Well, there's, there's the south portion and the north portion of their project.
Uh-huh.
The south one they're working on, that's a totally separate, independent of 18th Street.
Right, but they're not gonna plan one project without the other, are they? Or they'll have to if we...
No, uh, they're, they're, it's, it's one project for them, it's just two parts.
Right.
Part that's the 18th Street Viaduct portion, that's for the north section, and they would have to do some reconfiguring of their detention basin, or move it, which is not easy to do.
Mm-hmm.
To put in that rail, and then we'd have to redesign that bridge or that viaduct.
Do we still have the money that was awarded to us to do that design?
From the DOT.
Yeah, it was Tiger Grant originally to do the design.
Do we still have that available?
No, it's, we spent it.
We spent it to do the design?
Yes.
Okay.
You have the plans.
Yeah, we have a set of plans and the DOT, uh, I was told will not come back after us for the money if we aren't gonna build it, no.
Really? You have that in writing?
I, I, actually, I believe it, uh, Dakin said it was part of the new, the new Raze legislation is that they weren't gonna go and try to recoup money, I can get exactly where it's at, but...
Is there any grant money for it now anymore?
It'd be under the Raze grant and...
Yeah, exactly.
We could go back for it, but we, you know, the last time it was brought up, it was, we wanted to have Hooven done, we keep pushing Hooven back, those plans are already six years old.
But we don't want them to get any older.
Yeah, and then like I said, we're using them now, we're gonna prevent Cargill probably from doing their project, or if they do their project, the plans are absolutely no good. And basically you're starting from scratch again because now you have another rail line under there. So are we just at a point where we let go of this project? Because, do we wanna hold Cargill up and say, "No, you have to put in your new project based on the plans we have," or are we gonna tell them that you can do it, but you have to reimburse us and pay for a new set of plans for the viaduct, which was over a million dollars?
And is it looking like it's a $30 million project to do this?
That it is.
No, I bet every penny of that now, I mean, prices are, they're going up so fast, we can't, you know...
So it's not getting any less expensive by us waiting and, you know, can Cargill design their plan around the plan that we have for...
It doesn't look like it.
Why?
Without doing, without maybe moving their detention basin and all that, and we'd have to extend the viaduct further east. And if we do that, then we're impacting some properties that we hadn't intended.
Well, why do we have to move it?
Well...
To accommodate whatever it wants.
It would have to get moved, it'd have to get, yeah, moved.
Don't you have to build that for double stack trains too?
It'd have to, yeah, it's still gotta meet the, that's why, it's us to meet the requirements and you wouldn't be able to get down in time for Hawkeye.
You'd be way past your entrance to your CMG.
Well, no, because they're, they're, they're not that far off of the existing tracks, they're not, they're not...
You're gonna extend to Steuben at least.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be past Hawkeye.
Here, Council, let me, let me suggest this.
We're getting off track.
We're getting way off track here, this is a two-years-out project, we can come back with, with a meeting devoted, like a presentation devoted to this and whether to carry on. Um, we're spending more time discussing something that's not even in the current CIP plan.
Well, you got plans today?
Well, I did, it's, it's two hours late now, but yeah.
If I booked out till 2:30, you were here too.
Well, I don't wanna kill the project yet, I'd like to do some...
Yeah, I think, I think this warrants discussion all on it.
No, not part of the CIP.
That way you can update us, we can have some visuals, we can look where the plan was, then we know what Cargill's plan was or what they would like to do. Yeah, and if you can get information from Cargill too, I think that'd be important, like, what would it cost if they did have to remove their detention, right?
Do you want this in a separate discussion or do you want to come back and wrap up? Yeah, we can put a study group together for that.
This is, yeah, this is a minimum of two years out.
Before you fill the discussion, just a couple of things I'd like to have you include in what you're going to report on, Dave, is the original plan, the public had the impression it was gonna go over all of the tracks.
It was, mm.
Well, I've been told, no, it wasn't.
Oh, who told you that?
Padmore and I discussed it.
Oh, no, it always went over the track.
It only went over the west side tracks, it didn't go over anything?
No, it didn't go over to the east.
Yeah, it did go over the...
It only went over the UP, not the...
All the, all the tracks between Floyd Boulevard and Hawkeye it went over?
Not the other.
No.
There are other, still other tracks, well, the public had the impression that it was gonna be over all of them.
No.
Well, one of the council members gave me, had that, I thought had that impression. The other one was, Dave, is we were going through a period of time where the engineers' estimates of cost were not always close to the mark. And so there's a, for me anyway, there's a little bit of discomfort there, and so what I was looking at at the time was, you have three parties, four parties to the agreement, that they all share in that percentage of any increase that it might be. Where I was told, "No, no, we'll pay you X dollars, but if it jumps up $10 million, that's on the city."
Yeah, that's exactly how.
And I couldn't, I couldn't in good conscience spend taxpayers' money on a blank check, so those are the two issues I'd like to have you look at and make it clear what tracks we're talking about, because I don't think that was made clear previously.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying you didn't make it clear, you probably made it as clear as could be, but it was mis, it was a misunderstood, I think it was a misunderstood perception. Maybe that was just on my part, but I've talked to others that thought, "No, you're clear of all the tracks, all of the tracks." Well, wouldn't that take you over to 70?
Yeah, no, they, yeah, we weren't, uh, we weren't talking about tracks that are a mile away.
Which would probably double.
Yeah.
You'd be looking at 60 million, wouldn't you?
No, you'd be looking at 100.
100 million, 200 million.
It would be as long as, longer than the viaduct you got now, what's the replacement cost on that?
Uh, it's up to, I think, 140.
Yeah.
But Dave, if you please kinda keep that in mind when you're writing up...
Sure.
Of entities sharing in any increase.
Yep.
719-102, South Lewis Boulevard Reconstruction, page 300.
Where did this come up?
Been in the plans for a long time, yeah, longer than I bet.
And, and that's a state road?
No. Nope. South of Singing Hills is not state highway.
When did we take that?
Before I was here the first time.
No.
Yep.
No, because they tried to get us to take a bunch of that when Sergeant Bluff was, took theirs, but...
I would think this went through when they, when the counties took K-45 and all that. When the new 75 bypass went through, I bet you's when you got it, I can ask, I can ask DOT.
Well, that would have been, would have been in, after I was gone, because they built the bypass after I was gone, but they tried to give us this way back when Sergeant Bluff took it and we told them, "No." They asked, that's when they asphalted all that road for Sergeant Bluff and made the improvements through town and then gave it to them.
Yeah, no, this is, this, I've been here in 2003, it was...
This is not a high priority to me, there's not enough development there for me.
Because we've, we've, we've done part of it before.
Well, you got, where you had a commercial, I get that.
No, I'm saying part of this section of Lewis Boulevard was done with city funds before, I think from, from Strikers to the city limits. Or, no, the first, excuse me, no, may, whether the Striker...
You did from Lewis, you did from Lewis down to, I mean, you did from Singing Hills down a ways.
Down to Strikers, yeah.
I don't, I don't see that you, I don't, I read your memo and I don't see, I see less traffic on there now than what we, you don't have prints anymore, you don't have the truck wash anymore.
But it's just, it's just been moving up in the CIP since, yeah.
Project 719-121, NO resurfacing...
Project seven one nine one two one, annual resurfacing panel patch.
I'd like to drop back, we're never gonna develop that ground.
So that's a no? You want us to bring that back?
Yeah, you're, you're-
We can push it.
There's just no way you're ever gonna develop anything there.
Well, and it probably, it's probably not like take it off completely, but just put it in unprogrammed, because-
Yeah, that's fine, but there's very, I mean, if you could get Sal's back, he's got a bunch of ground back in behind it. He's talked about developing and that type of stuff, there may be some logic there. But you don't have Prince Manufacturing anymore, you don't have the truck horse there anymore. Back when Sal's back first went down there, he had all kinds of trucks he was running, you have less-
Traffic doesn't warrant-
No, other than people coming from Sergeant Bluff, there's still quite a few of those, and more, but-
Well, yeah, yeah.
Project seven one nine one two one, um, there's a revised work plan that Sarah's passing out on page three oh three. That we placed those pages.
So, as you know, we didn't, um, we didn't award the Hamilton Boulevard, Fifteenth to Twentieth and Thirty-Sixth to City Limits, through the costs, so we're splitting that up and rebidding it again this fall. But it'll only be Thirty-Sixth Street to City Limits. And fortunately, uh, we're going to apply for, uh, some STP funds. Uh, that'll be on the council agenda here, I think, next week, on the sixth. Uh, for like one point four million for Ham, the other portion of Hamilton Boulevard, West Fifteenth to West Twentieth. So because we have a void, I'm going to move up Glen Oaks Boulevard Panel Patch, Eaton Teton Trace to Chambers Street. And, um, did that out this year. Along with our Hamilton Boulevard Panel Patch at Triview and Third Street.
So when you, you're going Fifteenth to what on Hamilton?
Fifteenth to Twentieth on Hamilton. It's shooting for, it's not under fiscal year twenty-seven, but that's where it'll be.
Taking the medians out?
Uh, we, no, we hadn't planned on it, no. This is just an overlay, isn't it, just an overlay?
Well, you could take, take them out when you're doing the overlay.
Yeah.
Let's discuss that, going, you know, at a later date. We could start a trend.
I'd like to look, see what they're, why they're in there. If they're in there to prevent left turns out of traffic, then I probably would say, no, leave them in.
Right, but the ones that don't make sense that we talked about before, was, was it one of those, the one on Hamilton?
Stone Park North, yep.
Right, so what we do-
Where there's no access points, but they-
When we do, uh, Thirty-Sixth, yeah, when we do that, could we work that in? Because that's a mess anyway.
Mm-hmm.
That's a change order or something?
No, we, we put it in with the plans, if we're gonna redo them, yeah.
But then that would be taken out.
Yep, yep.
And then, gone.
Have we done any bike, talking to bikers about? I know you don't want to hear about it, because you live up there, but have we talked about any bike?
Trails on Hamilton?
Hamilton.
We can bring that back up again. It was, it was discussed at one time, and there was a lot of negative feedback, so I think we kind of dropped it, but that's, we can bring it back up again. It's counter to what, because you had asked about having a left turn lane, where-
Center turn lane.
Where, you're not gonna be able to do a center turn lane and bike lanes. If you do the center turn lane, you're gonna use up all your space that you'd use for bike lanes.
That's like Thirty-Eighth.
Yeah.
Yes, be, leading up to Thirty-Eighth, because if we put that pocket park in on Thirty-Eighth, that's gonna be even more left-hand turn possibility there. And the left-hand turn already traffic that goes into Casey's is ridiculous.
That's why you oughta, that's why you oughta have a bike lane, so people can't go around people trying to turn into Casey's. They out of wait?
But they don't, they try to squeeze in, they're doing it anyway, and it's their-
About as unsafe as you could get.
Give them a, a lane to make it safe.
Not wide enough to do what they-
It is. Not for a bike path too, but it's wide enough to do a center turn.
Yeah, we're gonna get the strike plan, that's our problem.
Gordon, is the, um, the Hamilton Boulevard's Thirty-Sixth to City Limits, is that, is that being the Thirty-Sixth to the City Limits? Where, where are we with that one? Is that what-
We're gonna bid that out this fall.
Oh, okay, this fall, so that would be in then next-
You're not gonna make them work all night.
No, we're, we're removing that.
Yeah, we're gonna take-
What was that, Dan?
So it'd be next spring, there'd be spring of twenty twenty-four when they would-
Yes.
Work on that, okay.
Yes.
And you, you actually talked to Knife River and Barclay?
Yeah, they, I, when I was at the asphalt paving conference, they talked to me, yep. And I, I see what they're saying, and, I mean, it was done because of the complaints we got about, going back to when we, when we striped that, impeding traffic, we had to impede traffic, so I think they tried to design around where we weren't gonna impede traffic. So now we're just gonna let them close the lane down and go from there.
I'll make a note to check that master plan of the bike trails, because I think they completed that last year. And just see if they have anything.
They can look at-
They have, they've got a bike lane on one side of the street.
I don't know if they, yeah, but I don't know for sure if they kept it. Maybe they did.
The other option is to, is to put a bike, take your bushes out at your country club and put it there like we do in any, to anybody else.
Great place.
A long stretch, there's no driveways, there's no street.
Right, and that head-
And then it wouldn't obstruct the view when you're trying to turn and-
Can't see the north coming, traffic coming from the north anyway, when you're trying to pull up.
It could be so wide on the bike lane, you could put a median in.
Project seven one nine one three zero, annual railroad crossing improvement, page three oh six.
That's where we need, seriously, that's where the bike needs to be.
Yeah.
And then it connects, and then it connects to outer drive.
It'd be like the people-
If it'd be like the people in Dakota Dunes, we'd have those people driving upon your golf course.
We don't want those people, don't want your people.
Golfers, by me, that would be concerned about it.
Well, you should worry about that even without a bike trail.
Project seven one nine one three three, annual infrastructure reconstruction, page three oh nine.
Hold on here, go back, you got two hundred and four thousand worth of negative balance, and you don't tell me how you're gonna fund that?
Right.
Three oh seven, you didn't put any money in to cover their shortfall.
Do you know if you're getting reimbursement back, or?
I would have to check with-
Yeah, it's supposed to be. Well, if it is, it should show.
I don't see the negative number at all.
I don't think you do, because this is that project-
Oh, there it is. Yeah.
You just want to give us a memo on the, all of the rail projects in one?
Because I don't think you, I think you're, I think you are negative, because you did more than you thought you were gonna do, because you did that West Nineteenth deal, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You did that West Nineteenth, which ran a lot more than you thought it was gonna, right? With the Burlington Northern.
Yep.
That's why I think you are that negative, because that one cost you more than you thought it was by a long shot.
Yes.
Project seven one nine one three three, annual infrastructure reconstruction, page three oh nine.
Kings Highway, Hamilton Boulevard to Meadow Lane, that's the stop sign right before Perry Creek. Are you actually gonna rebuild that little narrow?
Yes, it's already, uh, it's been engineered, been designed, it's been awarded to, um-
You bid that?
Aver.
Steve Harris?
Steve Harris, thank you.
Is that one he got the other day?
Yep.
So that, so you're gonna get rid of those railroad tie curbs and gutter?
Yes.
Good for you.
Sidewalks, yeah?
There's no sidewalk, you, you'll put sidewalks?
One side, one side.
One side.
Yeah, the other side is too steep, we'd have to chase it all the way back to the garages, we didn't want to impact them that much.
The other side doesn't have any, any way throughout the whole stretch, does it?
No.
The other side, it doesn't have any anyway?
No, no.
No.
What, which side, Gordon, was it gonna be?
The sidewalk? North side.
North side.
Oh, it'd be opposite, then, you're gonna have to cross the street, because there's, on the south side, when you get to Meadow Lane.
Yep, yes. And it was because of grade and retain-
Yeah, it is higher.
It's not that difficult to cross the street.
No, no, but it, it, it's-
No, I don't mean that towards you, I mean towards a citizen, they can do that.
Yeah, it's a different side of the street is-
They're out walking the dog.
And you're gonna actually widen it so you don't have to stop every time somebody comes?
Yes.
Excellent. Project seven one nine one three eight, annual bridge repairs, page three twelve.
Are you gonna take the bridges out on Mulberry Street, behind, that's behind like Sneaky?
Yes, eventually, on that one.
That one.
Here's, so we have two bridges on this, this Mulberry, South Mulberry project. One is the Martha Streets, Washington Street, whatever you want to call it, behind Sneaky's. It only serves both, this eighty-five-year-old lady in her house. Her two sons have both asked me to leave it in for the time being until she's not living there anymore. And, which should be this, he asked for a one-year delay. So basically, don't do it here in twenty-three, do it in twenty-four, which is fine, because it'll take us that long to get property acquisition and the design. So taking that out, putting a road on the south side of Mulberry, south of Bacon Creek, down on that old rail bed, onto Spalding, which goes to that Mobile Home Park. Then we can get rid of that Mobile, uh, Mulberry Bridge. We'll have to put a lift station in, we have to anyway, no matter what we do. It was, uh, inverted siphon there, and I don't know how it's worked over all these years, so.
And the bridges are bad, they're failing.
Oh, both of them are failing.
They're old wood, they're old wood bridges, aren't they?
They're failing, and the one-
The one's an old wood bridge, I bet.
One is, yes.
Did somebody want to buy one of those? Or has that changed?
Yes, she, well, we were gonna offer it to them, but they're like, no.
Oh.
They don't want to buy it, because then they have to be responsible for removing it.
I thought they wanted it.
Want it to stay there until she's no longer living at that residence.
Yep.
Excited, by the way, thank you.
You're welcome, yep. This will save us money, it's gonna be about a one point four million dollars for removing those two and putting in that road. But then there's no, no bridge maintenance, ever.
Right, because we'll put culverts-
Get rid of two, yeah, no, the, the bridges will go away, we won't need them anymore.
Oh.
No bridge, no culvert, just a road. New road, yep.
The road won't require any kind of culvert under it, nothing? Oh, good.
Project seven one nine two zero, oh, excuse me, that's, we just did that, didn't we? No, we didn't, sorry.
No, this is deck rest-
We just did it?
Which one?
Oh, okay, sorry. Seven one nine two zero six, Bridge Deck Restoration, page three fourteen.
Yep.
Nothing next year.
Project seven one nine two zero nine, Wesley Parkway Reconstruction, page three sixteen.
How come we didn't get any bridge money this year?
We didn't have any bridges on the list, we, well, we did, we ju, we just got one, we just, you just approved it.
Right, yeah.
But the year before, we didn't have any on the list.
Okay.
This year, we had two, didn't, one that didn't get funded, right?
Yeah, they'll only fund one, one per year.
Yep.
And now they, they no longer, they've raised the cap from a million to a million and a half, so. And to let you know, for that, those two bridge decks on Sixth Street and Eleventh Street, those are both being designed now. One, we just talked about with the three, um, four to three lane conversion, and Eleventh, on, yes, on those two, those two bridge, we are, uh, going to apply for one, we are going to apply for one big, um, bridge improvement project grant on that, for the two of them combined. And if we don't get, and if we don't get that, then we'll apply in the city-
Sneak it up, boys and girls.
So even though you know you'll only be awarded one, do you put in, let's just say we had three or four that we wanted to work on that year?
We have a ton on the list.
Right, do you only submit for one, or do you put them all in?
No, it just, so the, they'll tell us which ones qualify on the list.
Okay.
And we pick one.
Okay, great.
It's, it's on a rating system, it's automatically generated from the bridge inspection reports.
We still up in the air on Sixth Street from better turn lane?
Well, we're moving forward the design, that was what the resolution-
Yeah.
Double checking, getting a side eye over here.
Project seven one nine two zero six, Wesley Parkway Reconstruction, page three sixteen.
You're putting a bike lane in, but you still can't get to the riverfront, but-
Seven one nine two zero nine, yep. Seven one nine two six two, Eleventh Street, Grandview to Douglas, page three eighteen.
Is that a real project, do we have enough right of way?
Well, I, I have to, you know, Renee took this over from Jeff, Jeff was kind of the lead on this, so I'll have to talk to Renee on. Edit, that was, that was just a technical assistance.
Project seven one nine two eight three, Riverside Boulevard Resurfacing, page three twenty-four.
Just, not that it matters, not that big a deal, but why would you have to under, the underground, just because you're afraid it'll deteriorate over time? That's gonna be an expensive part of the project, taking that whole tunnel out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we wanted that tunnel out of there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna want to build over that, and then-
There's some risk, right?
The street's been built over for fifty years, and it, it sold up better than anything you got in town.
And decided to do it right.
Um, if we could make a pit stop at two eight one, previous project, I know there's no, nothing on the map for funding for it, the active transportation improvements, and it's probably not the right spot for it, probably should have gone under sidewalks, but, um, I had, I had a note about, um, possible bike lane under the interstate, not Hamilton. I know that that's something that's kind of voted for.
That, that comes up later, under info.
Oh.
Where you at now?
Two one nine two eight three, Riverside Boulevard Re-surfacing, page three twenty-four.
But you're just paying the state back for what you owe them.
Yep.
I was gonna say, that's dumb.
Which is payback.
Something we can do there. Project seven one nine three two eight, Highway Seventy-Five, IDOT Resurfacing, page three thirty-two.
Same thing.
Project seven one nine three six one, Woodbury County, LEC.
Can you hold on just one second, I want to look at that three thirty-two. What are we, what are we paying for here?
That big project they did, if we, they up front the money, then we gotta reimburse them for the water and that.
Oh, okay, that, that's our share.
Storm sewer, sanitary, water, anything that they have to, has adjustments as part of their resurfacing project, we've got to pay them back, so.
So them doing the highway isn't free.
Yeah. Inside curb to inside curb is their cost.
Right.
Unless you are stupid enough to take it over, like they would love, love to have.
Well, we're not doing that. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Seven one nine three six one, Woodbury County, LEC Infrastructure, page three thirty-six.
How soon are they gonna demolish the old jail, did they tell you?
Soon as they're out of it, I was told.
They have eighteen months to do that, that is written in the contract. But when they move out, because we wanted to make it a year, and they came back, said eighteen months. So, but whenever they move out, we have a contract for that.
Yeah, we have had contracts before.
Once again, do I need to repeat that? Alex and I are not on council at that.
Maybe. No, they gotta give you a-
That's not a part of our project.
Yep, but clean site is involved in that too.
Well, it depends on what shows at the time after it's demolished.
But you probably, and seriously, you should probably be prepared to have a couple lots at the airport, because the last time we ran into one of these sites, remember, we had to take it to the airport and let it air vent for like two or three years, that dirt. Because you don't necessarily have to haul that to the landfill anymore, okay?
That would be the county's-
No, I'm just saying, they may ask us for some ground, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Because you can spread that and let it vapor itself out.
Yep.
Oh. So you mean, so many feet down, they have to dig it up? Take it up?
Oh, yeah.
Clean up the land.
That, there's a plume down there, that, they're probably gonna overexcavate the front of that at least. I bet you they'd go twenty feet deep.
There were service stations there, or just one?
One service station, big one, but a lot of-
Anybody remember what their budget was for demolition? I do. I do. Um, like seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Good luck.
Yeah. I remember Dennis showing it to me. I said, you better triple that.
Yeah.
Add more, it's a little bit off topic. I'd like to have that agreement sent to all the council and the mayor again.
And so this is part of what your new fancy K E O study, that they didn't do anything but collect it off the top for H D R to do the study. The old show, we needed this, right?
That's coming up. That's three-seven-three.
Right, but part of it was, the first phase of that project that you put on the screen the other day was this project.
On West Eighth?
Yeah.
Yeah, or Eighth, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, that was the first project on your sheet the other day when they had it on the.
Yes, that's on there.
Project seven-one-nine-three-six-seven, Gordon Drive, I D O T Resurfacing, page three-thirty-eight.
And why, why is, uh, yeah, probably because we did some manholes. I was going to say, why are you using stormwater pumps? But I get it.
Seven-one-nine-three-seven-three, Downtown Annual Infrastructure, page three-forty-one.
This is the one we had that you were referring to. The, uh, West Eight Douglas to Nebraska, that one is scheduled for twenty-twenty-five. I will hold off on that till the jail is demoed and remediated. I don't want those to conflict.
But that's your preparedness for having them gone?
Mm-hmm.
Getting ahead of it. When are they supposed to move out of there?
Uh, I think Ron Wick told me September, fall of twenty, twenty-three.
September of twenty-three.
Something like September. I thought Ron said in his last time he sent me a video, what's going on.
Bless you. We're still, yeah, we're still on schedule for that.
Good.
Authority is.
They won't have the building out of there until twenty-five, or maybe, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Now, all of these items on this are all unprogrammed. It shows the money on there, but that's all unprogrammed at this point.
So what you have in twenty-five here could be pushed out.
If it is pushed out, I'm anticipating maybe one season.
Okay.
Project seven-two-eight-zero-one-two, Annual Parking Ramp Repairs, page three-forty-four.
Sorry, buddy, it took a bite. Um, I did have a question about this one, I just, or a note, rather. And I know we've talked about it, but then I question myself and what I remember. As far as replacing the meters, did we look at doing any like corner situation or something, so we don't have to replace these? Or are we confident that when we start replacing them, they're going to stay indefinitely for quite some time? I mean.
We, we, well, we started replacing them about three years ago. Um, we talked about doing the corners at that time, and that got negative feedback, that people wouldn't walk down to the corner.
Yeah.
Pay and, you know, have to punch in whatever their parking space number was and.
Yeah.
That would, we got negative feedback that people wouldn't do that.
Understandable, but there's some locations, like down by the promenade, there's some locations where there's a concentration of parking spots, where people are obviously going to a concentration of businesses where it might make sense.
Well, promenade, we don't have any meters.
No, I know, but I'm saying, areas where people park in a concentration like that, where they're going in one general location.
When, when, when we went through the whole thing and it was discussed in downtown partners, and the, the feedback was that that's not what they wanted, if we were going to have the meters.
They can keep it right there and just update them.
That's what the, the decision was three years ago.
No, I don't want. Kind of shows the inconsistency of our whole parking plan downtown. We have meters next to free parking.
Yes, we do.
I understand the, the lots that encourage you to get off the street, but you brought up the promenade. And I believe it's on Jones, there's parking meters, you go around the corner fifteen feet, and there's a free parking spot.
Yep.
Um.
Did we do that?
I know downtown partners probably wouldn't be supportive, but you go to other communities. We don't have meters on Fourth Street in front of the promenade because of the streetscape and the way, there's no curb and gutter, it's, it's flat. That could, that could be a good test spot for a park mobile, you know, park and enter or go to, go to a pay box. That's started to become a lot more common in cities a lot smaller than us even, that still have downtown paid parking.
Yep.
So you could have parking stations at, at those locations.
You might want to tell them that is actually a curb and gutter, just, we don't build them that way very often in Sioux.
Oh, no, that's actually, no, that's even flatter than what you think of as a mountable curb.
It drains.
Well, yeah, but it was, it was built, it was built, the whole idea that was, so you'd be able to open it up.
You're like walking on a plaza.
I understand that, but it still is a curb and gutter.
Yeah, it's very, it's, it's even, it's even less than what I would normally do as a mount, a mountable curb that, that you and I seem to.
Why is the parking like it is on Fourth Street in front of the museum? Why is it raised up and then it's got that lip after you parallel park?
I'm assuming that had to be for drainage. I'd have to go and look at it.
Well, I've fallen there twice on the street.
Where's that?
Right in front of the museum.
Right in front of the museum. When you parallel park there, you get out of your car, and there's a lip there.
There's a lip in it.
That's a, that's a, that's a curb.
Out on the left-hand side of yours, driver's door. It's in the street.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because it drops off, they got an elevated curb.
Elevated parallel parking.
Yeah, yeah, the, the parking spots are a little higher than the streets, so the water stays in that drain line. Because they didn't have enough, I think, to get it to drain back to the curb and back out again.
Hmm, well, it's draining my knee. I fell down two different times.
It was some first-year engineer that, uh, came up.
Check with the family engineer and see what can be done about it.
Went to some small Jesuit school up in Michigan.
Seven-five-eight-zero-two-one, Skywalk Rehabilitation, page three-forty-six. Keep you on task.
You're really saying these more with authority right now.
Hundred thousand-dollar structural assessment.
Where are we? Three, three-forty-six.
I know you engineers love engineers, but a hundred thousand-dollar structural assessment is a lot of money for a structural engineer.
A lot of structure.
Where's, you're going to have them, you're going to have them look at everything?
We're going to have them to see how much we can get them to look at, yeah. As much as we can get them to look at.
And, and you think there's big problems in the Skywalk system?
No, we just don't know what, what, what problems there are.
Normally, before you spend money like that, you have some issue that comes up that you say, I should probably get a structural engineer. I'm.
I, I, I'm just concerned that, because we don't have any structural assessments of it, that we want to fix something before it is a problem. Similar to the bridge inspections.
Yeah.
So is it proactive or reactive?
Yeah, similarly, you're required to have your bridges inspected every two years, and we never.
Bridge is a little different than Skywalk, but anyway, go ahead.
It is.
It is, but.
Well, someone just brought up to us that there was a hole in the Skywalk.
We haven't had any inspections like that before.
Hell.
Some tiles raised.
But that's, we've, we've determined that, that's probably out of a, a.
Moisture or something.
You did have a structural problem years ago, and they did look at it. You had one right there where that coffee shop art center is, because it was going in buskies, and we fixed that.
Well, we had a drainage problem there, yeah.
Well, but it was causing Skywalk problems.
Plus we had a trash truck.
We, we tried to get this as part of a Simcoe study, but it got kind of hijacked and became the, let's, let's, never mind.
Downtown Partners did.
Yeah.
Well, in our downtown park retreat the other day, Stacy Towler.
Katie.
I mean, Katie, I wrote Katie, I said Stacy. Katie mentioned, you know, she spends a lot of time in there, and she said, there's a hole in the, I thought she said there was a hole in the floor. So I'll, I'll check with her and.
Yeah, I'd be interested where that's at.
Bucket every day, and I, I've not seen a hole, but there are, there's a large amount of tiles that are bubbling, that they think there's moisture underneath it.
But that's not structural.
No.
No.
There's not a hole, I don't.
I mean, hope so, if you see a hole in it.
So we have not done a structural inspection before?
Not that I can find.
How old are the, how old are the Skywalks?
Seventies?
Uh, first ones, we built, uh, this leg, leg coming up, leg going to Central. Leg to the convention center back in the late eighties and mid nineties. Forty, thirty, forty years. Well, home furniture was Yonkers back in the eighties.
Right.
That was the, that was one of the earlier legs that.
Okay, so it's not. Wasn't the old ramp into Badger probably about the first?
Well, the old ramp into the Badger would have been first. The real first one was, it was, went to the Pennies and Maury Raymond.
Yeah, yep.
Ash, Maury, and Raymond.
So how long?
Old before you.
I, I know with the, the, uh, Old Sioux City Hotel, that property that's been, been acquired, I know they are planning on rerouting that, right? When, they turned off all heat in that section.
They own that section. They own the section from, from Discovery Ramp to, to where it turns to go over Nebraska, right?
Not Jackson, to the school district.
Up to the school, and then they own the section that obviously goes through the building. And they did come to us with an idea to rerouting. I don't think we've ever gotten any final plans on it, which we'd be fine if they rerouted the section. It would, as long as they don't cut it off.
So would that be part of this study?
No, that'd be on them.
This is just a structural assessment.
Just to see.
Just to look at our, our parts of the Skywalk to see if there's anything that needs to be done.
If they want to reroute, that's on their time.
Mm-hmm.
You just look at the actual.
They have the heat in the entire building off. I think, I think, because it's gutted.
You've got all that concrete sitting there, or the concrete, all that, uh, not concrete.
Drywall.
Drywall sitting outside, thank you. Been talking concrete for too long. All that asphalt sitting outside. Um, and, but are, are they continuing to make progress?
Um, I ain't talked to somebody that should know that lent them some money and said that they've given them a fairly, didn't give me the number, but a fairly good-sized loan to continue. I don't see anybody working there, but I don't go by there very often.
I know Tiff was in there a few weeks ago, and there was people working.
Yeah, I think they are working.
It looks like they're, I, I mean, they, they hauled away the, the dumpsters that were there, that they were filling up with stuff, and they've gotten some equipment, but.
They hauled a lot of stuff away. They gutted it, I mean, it's gutted, right?
Yep, she says down, it's down to the, you know, subfloors and everything, yeah.
Dave, if you have the structural assessment done, there is a possibility, maybe, it might be remote, but there is a possibility that there could be severe concerns or damage, or.
Yeah, there could be work that comes out of that, yeah.
Shut down part of it.
I don't think we're to that point, but I'd like to get, correct things before we get to that point.
What makes you think that, John?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, if, no, but I mean, if the inspection would show something that needed to be repaired.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we have to close it while we make the repairs?
Do you close parking ramps when you do structural things?
No.
Depends to the extent, but I would.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of repairs it would be.
I don't, I don't think we're looking at anything to that extent. We're hoping it's much smaller stuff than that, that they find.
Well, but you don't know.
No.
If, if you don't, and none of us know.
Nope, you're absolutely right.
If we did, we could save you a hundred thousand dollars, save the city a hundred thousand dollars.
On the, on the sky ramp, too, the, um, the handicap button on that ramp. Not Discovery.
Obviously, it's got a structural.
That's been broken.
Which one?
The handicap button in the parking ramp.
I'll have them look at it.
The Skywalk. It's one of those little tiny slivers of one, and both sides of it are broken.
Um, check out.
I've had a few people bring that up. Um, it, I mean, the plate's barely staying on it, so I think someone gave it a good kick.
I was going to say, that's because a lot of people kick those things and.
Not me.
You just make.
There's phone numbers, there's phone number stickers on almost every door. They can call to, and let somebody know.
But they don't, because it's some kid probably that did.
Hey, if you want to write it down, it's between the hotel and the walkway going over Jackson through, it's where the floor connect, floor connects to the wall.
So there's a hole.
Just watch, I'll, I'll just take it off the video and send it to her.
I'll text it to you.
Yeah.
The hole?
The hole?
That's what he's telling you. That's where it's located.
Yeah, okay. That's where the hole is located.
Write that one.
The black hole, the mayor's?
No, I'll take it off the video.
No, not that kind of a hole, a hole in the Skywalk that a citizen had reported to me on Thursday. So. I would prefer that you.
Okay, what else?
Project seven-five-nine-zero-zero-five, Annual Sidewalk Program.
We're going to leave that in for now?
A hundred thousand?
I could not take it out when you're so concerned about the Skywalk's fall in.
I think we should require that they do all of it, though, for that hundred thousand.
We'll, we'll have to see what.
Nail them down.
Well, we haven't even done an R F P yet. We have to, we have to.
We have no idea if it would be more or less.
We need the entire Skywalk. I mean, can you do that?
Yeah, we will do an R F P, the entire Skywalk, shoot us in a cost proposal, and we'll determine whether a hundred thousand is even possible, or if we've got way too much in.
You think those engineers don't look at your book? You're out of your mind, pal.
Okay, seven-five-nine-zero-zero-five, Annual Sidewalk Program, page three-forty-eight.
Here you go, Matthew.
There it is, I.
We're paying for it, and we shouldn't be. I, I have in big yellow letters, assess. That's what you do on these.
We do.
Well, th- these are, these are suspect, the property.
How do you assess them? Because they're bad?
Yeah.
Yep.
But so this isn't new? This is bad side.
Defective, defective.
And they have an option to fix it themselves, or we go fix it, and then we assess it once a year?
Well, as soon as you get done with this one, I'll be getting a phone call from my daughter, because I think she might be on the list, so. I think she's got good sidewalks, so.
Well, if you, well, if you look at the spec, it's pretty tou, I mean, but a lot of it, like, is little pock marks like that. Alls you got to do is go buy some non-shrink drought and fill it in.
You don't even have to do that.
They got to fill a pock mark.
You can fix that with self-leveling claw.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can go out and just put something, fill it in. And even that, we don't require a permit. They just take a picture and send it in to us, and we're good to go.
But, um, Thirty-Fourth Street, Pawnee to Dupont, there's only a hundred and twenty-five feet. But are we, I want to make sure on this one, we got a subdivision going up there. Okay? I want to make sure that that subdivision has sidewalks on Thirty-Fourth.
It's on their plans.
Okay, but there's no, no place for that sidewalk to go to the.
Lafayette?
That, well, back to the east, there's not sidewalks. I think there's a lot that's missing sidewalks.
That's on the west side.
That's the next project, actually, on seven-five-nine-one-zero-eight, Sidewalk Infill Program. It's on the twenty-four plan for Dupont, Thirty-Fourth to Thirty-Third.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on the, uh, actually, on the west side of that project.
Sorry, we were on the other project, sorry.
I'm, I'm just, uh, there is, still is going to be some infill, even if you fix these up Thirty-Third to Thirty-Fourth, isn't there? Got them all? Okay. Okay, good, if you do. I, I think there's a couple lots up there that don't have sidewalks, but.
On the south side, probably so, but not on the north side.
Yeah, no, I know.
And it'll be continuous if you've done the north side.
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure Matt has a chance at doing some infill where you actually assess.
Infills aren't, yeah, we don't assess the.
We don't assess these.
Not in, on, not on, uh, was it one, one oh eight? We, we could, but we don't. We just, these are ones we just do.
We just started doing.
That's what I'm saying. Do you assess these or not?
Not these. No, we assess this one.
The Annual Sidewalk Program.
No, I know that, but that's what I'm saying. These should be, we never did these. We've never done these. We shouldn't be assessing those. Why, why do we, why do we reward developers that got by cheap?
Well, I think this is, this isn't doing the, in front of the development, this is doing the connect where the development leaves off to.
Because somebody got by cheap and didn't have to put sidewalks in.
And now we should assess the home that bought it from the developer.
Yeah, because they bought it.
Are these empty lots, though?
Or what?
Are these empty lots?
Doesn't matter, you can still assess.
Some of these.
You can assess the value of the law.
Some of them are. Like the Fremar one, the Fremar Drive, that was, that should have been done, but that was under our agreement, I guess, back in the day for us to put it in. That's what, that's that, the, the one up by, uh, North High School, west of North High. Dogleg up, up the hill.
He never agreed to not, no way.
Apparently it is.
Well, then you guys agreed to it, because I would have never agreed to not put. So none of those houses up there have sidewalks?
No, he's talking about along Outer Drive. No, it's actually on Fremar.
Oh, oh.
In front of the basin.
Detention basin.
Detention basin.
No, I remember that, and I argued.
I wasn't here when that got done, so.
You mean from Outer Drive up Fremar?
Yes.
Just on that one?
Just that one lot.
Oh, okay.
Because we own that lot, because we were dumb enough to take it.
Right. I hate the way that's built in there, anyway.
It grows weeds. That's how good we, that's why I argue we should never take those.
This is where Hamilton Drive, Hamilton Boulevard, that's where.
Well, you guys keep voting for that, and when we get the long-term maintenance on it, that's why you don't want those detention, retention. Well, you guys keep voting for that and when we get the long-term maintenance on it, that's why you don't want those detention, retention bonds.
We don't want to own them.
Seven five nine one one four annual sidewalk ramp program.
Boy, we got a long ways to go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Twelve thousand a pore basically, right?
Yes, out there.
Eight five nine zero four three annual fiber optics.
Well, can we go back to those ramps?
Sure.
For just a second. We have ten thousand of them.
Ten thousand?
Is that what it says?
Oh, I don't think so.
Yeah, the city has...
Oh, yes.
It does say we have ten thousand of them.
Most of these on this list here, oh, not most, but the top half, you'll see the R next to them. Those are red ones, those red domes.
Where's those at? What page?
Three fifty-four.
They the bad ones then?
Yes.
Are these all the identified ones or do we have a, a list that's longer?
Oh, okay.
I don't, we...
What we're down to?
We're gonna start with those.
No, it's not what we're down to. This is what we have. I'm, I can't put them all on there. We add them as we see them.
Or just pop up the red.
And as people complain, we'll put them on.
Who fit, who fits us or we outsource it?
We outsource it, yeah, our consult, a contractor.
Yeah, but that's twelve thousand a corner. You're, you're gonna redo...
The mayor had a question. So if it's with the red, obviously they already have them there. We just need to take the red off and put the yellow.
No, most of them are, most of them report incorrectly, yeah.
I'm pretty sure legal...
Who was the engineer when that was done?
Couldn't tell you. I don't think there was any actually on those. They just put them in. A lot of, uh, the developments out there in Whispering Creek, same thing. They, they went in there, the home builders went in there, built them, put them in incorrectly and said, okay, we're good. And then we went out there and looked at them. Right now, they have to be completely rebuilt.
So they're in the concrete, so just walk me through the steps. So you have to...
Tear it out.
Yeah.
Tear the whole thing, the whole thing.
And put concrete in?
No, the, the, the ramp just gets, it's, a lot of ones that they're using are the plastic ones. They just push right into the, the wet concrete. They have studs on the bottom that hold them in place.
G I P score fourteen.
Well, you gotta do it. I don't care. I'm not arguing that. Just lock it.
Yeah, we definitely have to do this. I'm not sure if it's, it should be a higher priority, though.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the ones we're pushing out until twenty-five.
I know that...
Floyd Boulevard Trinity Drive, we didn't require one when we did that street just recently, because we redid that sidewalk, didn't we?
What street?
Trinity to Floyd Boulevard, we just kind of redid that.
That's, yeah, Thirty-Third Street. Oh, um, Bertrand's? No.
No, no, it's right by Casey's.
Oh, that one. Yeah, no, we fixed that, yeah.
Huh?
We fixed those.
Well, it's still on the list.
Is it?
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, you just, that's what I thought. You redid the sidewalk up there when you did the, all those patch replacement deals. They were tore the street up, didn't you?
Floyd and Trinity Drive. Oh, no, Trinity, there's a Trinity Court, maybe. We'll have to look. That might be Trinity Court, which is where the Dairy Queen and, uh, I think the Dairy Queen might be closed, but, you know, there's a little, there's a little, there's a little, that might be that. We'll double check that one.
Right across from, uh...
Yep.
So are the ones at the R the worst ones, the red?
Yes, so is it, yeah. Yeah, there's...
Bring that out over a couple of years or three years to...
So this started a few years ago. We were budgeted, I think, a hundred thousand or ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five.
And so we were doing, and we're just not, not making progress. That's why we jumped it to three fifty.
Right, but shouldn't we start with the Rs first?
I, I think they're mostly complaint-driven.
The ones in twenty-three that you see at the top, those are already designed and they're going out to bid also.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate, it seems like you're getting through a stack of the Rs and it makes sense to do like...
And twenty-four, you're getting through a good stack of the Rs, I guess.
Yes.
It'd be nice if you could add three more to twenty-four and just wipe them out.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
That's an extra hundred and five thousand.
Then you would take out the one that's in the...
Move the three Rs that are in the twenty...
Take out that eighteen thousand, Gordon. Because that's not an R.
I'll look into that one. I'm not sure why that one was left in.
Were you just doing that because you're in, I think because they're in the area?
Yeah.
Doing it because they're out there.
Mobilizing.
Okay, mm-hmm, all right. Fourth and Fifth Avenue on South Newton, yeah.
Project eight five nine zero four three annual fiber optics, page three fifty-six.
This is the one I was talking about, Dave, the Riverside. And then up above Lakeport, have you done that yet? It's singing hills.
Yeah, South Lakeport's already, I, I believe that's already getting, that's already under contract and being, I don't think it's done, though. Not already under contract. It was started last summer.
But, but you had money in another project.
No, that, but that's for, uh, to, to go through and do a new study of all those signals.
That's okay. That's fine.
It talked about the failure of the op, fiber optics, but it's to redo the timing plans like we did on Hamilton.
But here's the deal, the Riverside Collector Well, you're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars to run a fiber down to that. I hope it... I mean, I, I, I know you're gonna run fiber, but it's serving, it's, it's serving one deal. That's a lot of money.
Which line are you on, Mayor?
Riverside Collector Well.
The thing sits way down there all by itself. Nothing's ever gonna come of that.
Yeah, it's only, it's only a service to collect...
Yeah, you're gonna run a whole bunch of fiber.
And why do you need fiber there or why?
You'd have to ask Brad. It was part of the data system.
But it's still, it's too bad you have to run so many pairs that you never use. That's my complaint.
Right, because you said you need two. Well, maybe we can look at an alternate plan for that.
I mean, they could run a smaller amount of, the cost isn't the fiber, the cost is the duct.
Right.
Well, then the cost is the, is the put in.
Yeah, installation, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, you put four pair or you run forty-eight pair, isn't it gonna cost you?
Doesn't matter because the tube that they run...
Yeah.
Project eight seven nine zero zero six G I S enhancement, page three fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
That's it, huh?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
There's one additional project?
Nope.
Sorry, for finance, um, project eight five nine zero two five annual technology improvements, page one sixty-two. This project, like every year, we, um, utilize to, um, fund, um, technology projects throughout the city typically. And this year is no different than any other. We've, um, we will be funding some of the projects that were requested in, um, in requests. I will say that, um, the additional funding in twenty-three, um, will go towards some, um, software that will update, um, all of the, um, H V A P um, across most buildings in the city that will allow, um, us to, um, update those. Right now, they run on like Internet Explorer, so they need to be updated so they can run on a different, um, Internet, um, platform.
God.
Rebel, good idea.
Run on, uh, systems that are longer supported.
Yeah, and it's a real, it's a huge risk assessment issue with penetration testing. It was probably the highest risk. So, um, this, this project is nice for those types of things that come up. Any other additional questions or?
We adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Okane?
Aye.
Shainer? Aye. Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. I enjoyed this today.
I would love to, uh, take a walk down through the Skywalk when I'm afraid...